Okay, it is three o'clock and we will start the August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three study session. And again, we're dealing with the two thousand and twenty-four budget. This time, we're looking at water and wastewater rates. And I'll look at Mr. Scragg, and I'm sure he's gonna look across the room to somebody else.
I'm definitely gonna do that. I'll try to make it quick. But as you may or may not have noticed or recall, in years past, water rates and comprehensive fee schedule and capital improvement were things that kind of followed behind the budget process or were dealt with later. We've been pretty aggressive in this budget cycle and been able to bring you capital improvement planning, bring you comprehensive fee schedule, and now we're bringing you the water rate study. So as you may also recall, Debbie Pack, Finance Director with Martha's help, has developed a pretty extensive rate modeling approach that we then update annually. And so I'll turn it over to her to walk you through all of that and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. And as Mike mentioned, Martha Tasker's here, Utilities Director as well, to answer any of the technical questions that I can't answer. Today, we are gonna talk about water and wastewater rates. It's a complex issue, but it's not complex if you break it down. So I thought we'd start with some of the background and how we got where we are, because we do get a lot of questions about why we charge excess rate fees and things like that. As you recall, back in the early two thousands, there were, and there still are, a lot of concerns about water. And are we gonna run out of water? Are we gonna be in a drought? You know, all those things. So prior to, from nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand and eight, the city had what they called a decreasing block water rate structure, which means the more you used, the less you paid per unit. And in two thousand and eight, as part of the water study, it was recommended and the City Commission at that time adopted what is now called an excess use water structure, which means if you use over a certain minimal amount, that you get charged extra. And the goal of it was conservation, because at the time, we were going through some drought issues, and we consistently have gone through those issues as we moved forward in history. So from two thousand and nine to present, that's the kind of structure that we have been on for our rate study, or for our rate structure. And we call it that, the excess use rate structure. I did provide you with the resolutions that adopted both of those back in two thousand and eight, Resolution eight sixty-five twenty-three, that explained kind of the definitions of some of the terms that we use in water. One of those is a winter quarter average. This hasn't changed over the years, but the measure of unit has changed. So you'll see in this resolution and the resolution that City Commission adopted in two thousand and eleven, the definition doesn't change. Winter quarter average is defined as the usage of water in January, February, and March of any given year, and that's averaged over those three periods. And that determines a couple of things when we're billing water. One, it determines what your sewer rate, as a residential customer, what your sewer rate is gonna be based on. So we take that winter quarter average, and we apply our sewer rates to that for the next year. It also determines your basis of your excess use fee. So it creates what we call a baseline that then is used to determine whether you've gone over that baseline and whether the customer is charged to that excess use fee. We also have what we call a minimum quarter average, and we've determined that to be eight hundred, we determined it then to be eight hundred cubic feet. And when that was translated, it was translated exactly to fifteen, for fifty-nine, five thousand nine hundred and eighty-five gallons, but we round that up in our, in our language to six thousand gallons. So at any time, the minimum is used for calculating the excess use charge. So if my, for example, if my winter quarter average is five thousand, I'm charged at six thousand for excess use calculations, or the base, one hundred and twenty percent of that. I'm charged at five thousand for my sewer usage, because that truly is my winter quarter average. So it gets a little confusing, but there are purposes for all of those definitions and all of those terms and all of those calculations to make it kind of fair across the board about who's charged for what and how they're charged. Our excess use baseline is defined as a hundred, one hundred and twenty percent of our winter quarter average, or a hundred and twenty percent of the, of the minimum winter quarter average, whichever is less. So that means that if you use a certain amount during those three quarters, you're allowed to use up to a hundred and twenty percent more without getting charged that excess use fee in the later, in the rest of the year. The excess use charge, it's a separate charge on our rate schedule. It's two times the rate of the cost of gallons, a thousand gallons per water. It's applied to all irrigation meters, and it's applied to any of the excess beyond that excess use baseline. And that's where we get a lot of questions as well, is how's that calculated? What is the number and that, that type of thing. So as you see on the rate schedule, you see the excess use fee, that's two times the normal rate of water usage. This is not abnormal. A lot of communities use this baseline technique, and it is really to encourage conservation of water usage by residential customers. So the next slide, and I gave you a correction to this slide, because after I did my calculations, I went to my experts in the water customer accounting, and they, they kind of schooled me a little bit on how to, exactly how to determine this, because I was not using that minimum. I was using an amount lower than that. So on the next slide, six, it shows your, your five months' usage over to the left. And if you added those first three months up, and you divided it by three, you'd get five thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight gallons. That would be what would be considered this particular customer's winter quarter average. It would be used to be, bill them for their sewer usage for the rest of the year. However, because it's lower than the minimum, they would be charged for excess use on the minimum, which is the five thousand nine hundred and eighty-five gallons, or six thousand rounded, when we're calculating their excess fee. So we're really giving customers that use less than six thousand gallons, a little bit of a buffer there for that, for that excess use calculation. So in this particular case, then the excess baseline is seven thousand one hundred and eighty-one gallons. So we apply the regular rate of five fifty-eight to the eighty-two hundred, and for May, for this May billing, to the eight thousand two hundred and twenty-one, twenty gallons per thousand gallons. We apply the excess use to everything over seven thousand one hundred and eighty-one gallons. We add on the meter charge, which is a fixed rate for particular-sized meter. We add on the monthly sewer charge. We charge the consumption charge on the five thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand gallons of their winter quarter average. And then we have this line of drive-through recycling charge that goes on to all water customers, leaving this particular customer's bill in May at one, one hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents. I'll stop there, because it is kind of complex. If you have any questions on excess use, how that's applied, any of those questions on, on this particular thing, Martha, I will try to answer those. Martha's much more schooled at it than I am, so I might let her talk about it.
I've looked at it three times, and I'm sure it's right in front of me, and it's just ready to hit me in the face. But the fee, the five dollars and fifty-eight cents fee?
Yes.
It looks, is it the same rate for the regular and the excess? I guess I was looking for a higher rate for the?
It's doubled, but if you look at the calculation, you're paying, you're paying the rate on the entire amount used. If you look at the revised page I gave you, you're paying that base rate on eight thousand two hundred and twenty gallons of water.
Oh, the excess gets billed twice.
And then you're paying another five hundred and fifty-eight, yes. So you're paying, you're being billed twice for that one thousand thirty-nine gallons.
Right there in front of me. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
That's kind of how I did it, what you were thinking the other way, and it wasn't quite right, so.
Commissioner Davis, a week or two ago, you had a question, I think in other business, about a citizen that had contacted you about irrigation meters and why that rate was twice as much. And I think, we kind of put off the answer to that question, but I think the presumption was that there should be some savings realized if you have an irrigation meter. But in reality, because of the conservation rate structure, we're intentionally charging that, that excess use charge and everything that goes through an irrigation meter. And so Martha may be able to speak to circumstances where it's beneficial to have an irrigation meter or not. It's probably more beneficial in a commercial application than it is in a residential application.
And I think one of the other questions that the citizen had asked me is answered, the sewer charge is the same for twelve months in a row, based on the previous?
That's correct.
Average, so?
For residential.
For res, right. So it wouldn't matter how much, that's not gonna change anyway?
No, some individuals have asked, well, I'm just gonna use a lot of water in those winter three months, I'll have a higher excess use charge. And I said, well, you can, but wastewater costs are actually higher, and you're gonna end up paying that cost, that difference for the rest of the year. So the math might not work as well as they intended. So I've worked through that with a few customers and tried to help them understand the math, because as you say, you can look at it two or three times, and it's just a little bit confusing until you finally get it.
Is there a charge for the second meter?
Yes. And that's really the real difference of what you're paying between having a house meter and a yard meter. You're paying a meter charge on both of those meters.
But that doesn't show in your example?
No, because this particular customer does not have it.
Does have, okay, that was my.
Right. This is just a regular residential.
Is it the same rate?
Yes.
Okay, it is.
But they only pay for?
They pay eight months out of the year for that extra meter.
Okay.
Not, not the winter months, that you would not be irrigating. So hopefully, that helps a little bit. And I think in the earlier days, there was not a lot of thought give to the cost of the second meter, and maybe irrigation systems weren't as broken down into zones as they are now, to where you can deal with them on your, as a residential customer. Then whatever excess use you have over and above, at least gives you a little bit of a push on your irrigation system, if they're together.
On the second meter, do they pay the wastewater charge?
No.
No.
Exempt from that, okay.
That's the purpose of the irrigation meter. If you were commercial, then you'd want a separate irrigation meter, so you could keep track of what's irrigation and not pay a wastewater charge on it. So there, it can, can make a difference for you if your water usage for that month, that month is greater than what the extra meter costs. So you have to do the math in a lot of cases to make sure you're saving dollars where you're saving dollars.
Just gonna throw this out there. I'm assuming the meter costs a finite number of dollars and?
Eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for that size, right now. But different sizes are different amounts, yes.
So is the charge in perpetuity for billing software? I mean, what, what's a person getting for that six forty-six a month? Once, I mean, once the meter's paid for, I'm assuming the meters last a pretty long time?
They'll, they'll pay that monthly for the meter.
Right. But is that, I mean, it's not just for the cost of the?
No, no.
Meter?
Maintenance and things like that.
All of the admin and different things, the administrative staff go into that. The meter costs are not twelve or thirteen hundred dollars over your month or two, over the several year. So it covers a lot of costs. We haven't broke down in the rates.
Okay.
Maybe I'm reading between the lines a little too much, but is this basically, are we trying to discourage that second meter in residential applications?
We really haven't found a benefit to having a second meter in the residential.
I suppose if you, residentially, if you watered enough?
Yes.
It might be financially advantageous to you, but may not be the case in kind of a typical residential setting.
It just seems like what I've found is they're usually in older homes, and it's, it's kind of, you either inherit the setup, or at least personally, I've, I currently have a setup like that now. And I can tell you, one of the drawbacks is if your irrigation system has a leak from the, the main line to the, to the solenoids and all the valves. One, you won't know until you get your bill.
Right.
And there is no, there is no mercy, because there's not wastewater fees that you can play around with, and it's just the bill is the bill.
Right.
And fix the leak.
That is a very common water conservation tactic, is to not, or to try and discourage second meters, because all of that, all of that water is used for irrigation. So it's, it's, it's kind of the, it's the excess stuff that you're trying to get out of your system if you are trying to conserve. So the first thing we do if we have a conservation issue, we don't have water, is we tell people?
Not water.
Cut back on watering. So lots of communities who have bigger water issues than us, limit it altogether. I don't, in haze, you cannot get a yard meter. It just, it's not allowed for residential.
Yeah, at this point, I think the only benefit is that you have higher water pressure for your irrigation system, and that's about it.
Right. Martha and I have talked about that. Now, she talks to customers, and I shouldn't speak for her, she encourages them to look at what their need is for that meter. If they need a one-inch meter as opposed to a five-eighths inch meter to get that pressure, then it's more beneficial to go that way.
About the water loss, or the water pressure loss through the meter versus their demand for irrigation and their home. And if you do it as a little mini engineering exercise, you can help them understand what could help, help them as far as water pressure and having their irrigation system not running at eight o'clock in the morning when everybody wants to get ready and get dressed and wash dishes and shower and those type of things. And usually, in most cases, they're able to, to manage when they irrigate, but it takes some modification to their sprinkler system. Sometimes, some of the older ones aren't set up on timers to allow that much flexibility. So we just try to educate them, but not, we don't force them, as they do in haze. We give them the option, but we try to use dollars and cents and help them think through what it means.
If you'd like to take this up further, we can certainly do that. But I, looking at the clock, I might wanna keep moving.
With large industrial users, is this winter quarter average still? Is it a totally different formula?
It's a different ballgame. That's, you haven't got to that item yet. I was gonna talk about the water consumption, if they use over twenty-two million gallons in a year, and those are industrial customers, and we have a handful of those. And then they have to have somewhat of a water conservation plan that's approved. Schwann's would be a good example of that. They use several million gallons, but they went through in the last few years and did a lot of water conservation measures to drop their use down, because now water is similar in cost as their other products that they use in their pizzas. So they have a conservation plan, so they only pay the tier-one rate, the regular water rate.
So, so they'd be on their own rate structure?
They are. But every now and again, the math in the computer wants to give them an excess use rate, and we have to go back and look at that for them on occasion. I think we're doing it right now.
Yep.
For Schwann's. So sometimes, the software has a better idea than following the process, and Schwann's has seventy or eighty meters. So it's a little complicated to put all their pieces together, and not the same names either on every, every invoice. So we're trying to help them get all that together, so they don't pay any excess use rate on their bills.
Okay. So that's kind of the background, the rates, how they're calculated. So then, basically, what, what we do is we take this rate study, and Mike gave me credit for this, and I didn't, I can't take that credit, because it was actually created prior to me. I just implemented. But we do have to look at a lot of things when it comes to water. One of them is what are the future capital needs, because the capital needs of the water system are extremely expensive. So we have to be prepared for those things. So what we've done in this particular study is, the only outstanding item that we're looking at today is the, the remediate, the shilling water remediation. As you know, from back in, when we settled this, the original estimate was about a hundred and ten million dollars. We revised that estimate, got a DOG settlement, DOG settlement of seventy-six million dollars. However, in the event that that goes over that seventy-six million dollars, we are still holding out a five million dollar cost influx to that project in the, in the event that those costs do exceed what we got from the DOJ. So that number is in the study. It is not financed until two thousand and twenty-seven, so that doesn't go into effect until two thousand and twenty-eight. So the numbers you see, it catches right on the end of this five-year study. The other thing that we've looked at in the past, but we're currently in the middle of, is the wastewater plant upgrade. As you recall, that was about a thirty-one million dollar, thirty-one and a half million dollar project. Today, it's about a forty-one and a half million dollar project, plus an additional eight and a half million dollars of capital reserve equipment replacement. That has always been part of the plan, that once we decided what that process was gonna look like, we were gonna need other equipment in that plant to kind of work with that process. So Martha's been planning on that since we started this, this several, several years ago. So we do have those numbers, the full cost of that debt financing in this, in this plan. We also have budgeted for that eight and a half million dollars of capital equipment replacement at the wastewater plant. Waterline improvements, we've talked about these, this before, but historically, what we've done is, when we started the, the project of waterline replacements, our intent was to debt finance about twenty million dollars worth, and we've done that. And so, so our intent, the city's intent all along was to debt finance that through loans or bonds. We've done it through loans, and then to start paying for that with cash. So in the, in the current budget, in the past year or two budgets, we've had two million dollars in the budget to pay for those waterline improvements annually. We'll talk about that a little bit more, because we've got a little bit different approach to how we're doing that, because what we're finding is, it's difficult to get the projects together. It's difficult to find vendors to actually do the project in a year, and it's difficult to, to kind of spend all that at, at one time. So we do have two projects ready to go out for bid this year, so we've left them in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. We do intend to encumber those funds this year, whether that's four million dollars as we've budgeted, or more because of the cost. Those items are in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. For assumptions going forward, we've utilized some assumptions for the last five or six years that personnel will increase. I'll explain this a little bit, though, because the projections that we're using in the study are based on the current year's budget. As you know, going through budget, it's very difficult to know, the only numbers we know are the actual budget, are the actual dollars, and those numbers that we know are from two thousand and twenty-two. So two years ago, we know what happened, for sure. We are only estimating what's happening for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, because we don't know until it happens. So these projections that we're doing in the study are based on the two thousand and twenty-four budget. However, what we found in looking at the utilities budget, and, and we've talked about this a little bit before, is we don't, we never spend what we, we budget. So we looked at that, we took a look at that, tried to figure out if there's an average, is there a number, should we, what should we do? Because what we felt like was happening was that, because we were projecting on a budget that was, that was inflated, because we weren't spending the entire budget, we felt like we were increasing rates when we really didn't need to. So we're trying to adjust, adjust our numbers to make this as real as we possibly can, because the last thing we want to do is raise rates when we don't need to. So what we've done is we've done some historical information, and I'll get to that. But basically, we've taken eighty-five percent of what the utilities department submitted for their budget, and that's the number we're using to project from. The other change we've done, and I mentioned this just a few minutes ago, is rather than budgeting for two million dollars, historically, we've budgeted two million dollars for system enhancements, which is like upgrades or fixes to water wells and pumps and things like that, and an additional two million dollars to waterline replacement. And we've not been able to spend it. We've not been able to get those projects out the door because of resources, or whatever, for whatever reason. So what we've done in this projection is we've taken a million and a half dollars, and we've ta, and we've created a transfer out of the operating budget into the capital reserve for that money to be set aside for when we can spend it, in hopes that over a couple-year period, we could spend three million dollars instead of have it being on the, instead of as budget, as you know, budget dictates when we spend our money. And if we say we're gonna spend it in two thousand and twenty-three, and we don't spend it in two thousand and twenty-three, it's not there in two thousand and twenty-four, just because we didn't spend it. We authorize annually, and by doing this, it gives us a little bit of leeway to say, we're gonna set this money aside in a capital reserve that we can spend when we, when we can do it. And that way, it's available and it's ready for us to use when we get those projects to go out the door. So we felt like that was a better approach to this. On this slide, you also see all the projects that are currently being supported by the debt financing, including the water remediation, the water plant at its full forty-one five. We just got those numbers, so we've included those. The next slide is a little bit of history, but this is still all part of the assumptions of what the rate study goes through. On this slide, we give you historical data on how many customers, water customers, we have over the last ten years. You can see that it's not a very huge growth, about a one-point-one-eight percent average growth since two thousand and sixteen. And we also show you the volume of water build and the sewer build over the last ten years. And you can see that average for water is about one-point-seven million, and for sewer, about one-point-three million. So what we've done in the assumptions, because these are used in the revenue side of the assumptions, is we've assumed the one-point-six-seven and the one-point-two-six in out years as, as our volumes. So those are historical numbers, and we'll see how those feed into the, the study as we get there. The other thing I wanted to impress on you is, is our historical rate increases. Martha and I have said this over and over again, and I know you're probably tired of us hearing it, but we've, we've always tried to increase our rates at a small, consistent amount in order to avoid rate shock when we put in a forty-two million dollar water plant, or a forty-two million dollar wastewater plant. So you can see here from this slide, on, on slide thirteen, the rates that we've been increasing our rates over the past ten years. Last year, for this year, we did zero, and that intent was to kind of catch up that spending with what we had intended to do, in hopes that we would be able to get some of that catch-up from, especially from COVID, when we completely shut down and weren't doing a lot of things, to be able to catch that spending back up. And you'll see as we get through the rate study, that's still our goal. Our goal is to keep as, as low a rate consistently over time to maintain what we need to maintain to, to maintain the operating side of the water and wastewater utility.
And if I could add one thing, both historically, as well as going forward, we're also looking at reserve fund balance projected out into the future. So recognizing the debt that we're taking on, recognizing the projects that we're funding, recognizing the projects that are on the horizon, we're trying to make sure that we don't let that reserve balance fall behind and then necessitate some big catch-up rate adjustment somewhere out in the future.
So the next slide, and you've turned, and we've talked about this a lot, is we have a twenty million dollar budget, uh, fund balance in this fund. So I wanted to give you kind of some historical data about how we got here. You can see the majority of that came in two thousand and seventeen. I don't remember, I didn't look up to see what that was, but you can see two thousand and twenty was a big influx because of COVID. Two thousand and twenty-one, we were still trying to catch up. That's the top section of that. The bottom section is the capital reserve. We were putting in about two million dollars a year, twenty, two-point-five million dollars a year. We reduced that to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in two thousand and twenty, in anticipation of this wastewater plant improvement. That fund is also used for any economic development projects that come up, that we might need to do a relocate on, or something like that. This gives Martha the flexibility to be able to, to pay for some of those relocates, or those, those economic development projects that come along, that weren't, we weren't expecting when we did the budget. So you can see that, that we've built up that fund balance to about ten million dollars. We do have it budgeted in two thousand and twenty-four to spend that eight and a half million dollars. And you can see that we, we are continuing in this, in this model here to put back in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for economic development, and the one-point-five million for the, the system enhancement and waterline replacement. So you can see a transfer going forward of one-point-seven-five, and that's the, those two numbers. That's those two components of that number. The next slide, fifteen, we get into the meat and potatoes of the rate study. And there's a lot of numbers here, and I'm not gonna go over them. But basically, what we do is we break down every division in the utility department. We look at the actual spending. We look at the budget, and as I said, the revised budget line is at eighty-five percent of what was requested in the budget. I will note that the only items in the next three or four slides that were not adjusted by the eighty-five percent were debt finance payments, because those aren't gonna change. We know those are given, and the transfers to the capital reserve. So those items that are highlighted in orange in that column, the eighty-five percent reduction, or the fifteen percent reduction was not applied to those numbers. Everything else, we applied that fifteen percent reduction to get to kind of where we think the spending could be, as opposed to not. The other thing that we typically show in this, in this history is the future issues, and that's the yellow highlighted line on page, on slide seventeen. You can see in that column, we no longer have the wastewater plant in the You can see in that column, we no longer have the wastewater plant and the water plant and all of those things because those are all happening. But we do still have the groundwater remediation, as I mentioned earlier, with the first debt finance payment out in 2028. So we take all those numbers and we calculate to see where they, they leave us. And on slide eighteen, this is really the guts of the, of the numbers, and it shows us annually what our annual expense would be, our total fund expense, our total fund revenue based on the rates that we're applying, and where that leaves us as a fund balance. The dark purple line on slide eighteen is the fund balance that we're assuming will happen based on the projections and the costs that we have in those, in those columns. So you can see, we're still projecting at 2028, a fund balance of about 11 million dollars in this study. I will say that this model goes way beyond the five years that you see. We actually carry it out to 2040 because that's where we get a lot of debt and things like that. And with the model that we're presenting today, the model takes us out to, and our fund balance on this particular fund is five million dollars, so we try to maintain that. The model that we're presenting today takes us to 2034 before we hit that fund balance, and at that point, it drops to about 4.9 million, but it starts to go back up. And that's because we've paid off a couple of debt payment, debt projects, and so that's kind of our breaking point of where we're going to start seeing those numbers come back up. The other thing we look at in this model is the number of days of operations that we can support with the, this operating fund, and that's the dark green column. We like that to be at least six months, which is 180 days, and you can see we've exceeded that number. That number does fluctuate out, out in the model quite a bit. We get below that about in 2031. So the bottom line in all of these numbers is that we feel like a one and a half percent increase in 2024 followed by a two percent increase in the following four years, and we always give you five years, is going to be sufficient to maintain the operations of this, of this fund, keep the fund balance where it needs to be targeted. Still looks big, but we know it's going to be, starting to get eaten up, and also to be able to support the ongoing operations of, of the water fund. The next slide, nineteen and twenty are really where the calculation of the fees come. So as we apply an, an increase, it applies that increase to the annual, to the cost of the rates on slide nineteen. I've highlighted in yellow what the increased amount is for each of those years. It applies that to the cost of the water and to the cost of the meter, and then also on the, the sewer, it also applies that number there. And the sys, the table actually calculates from those numbers what we could expect based on that usage I mentioned earlier, that historical usage, what we can expect in revenue. And that's how we can tell that our expenses that we're projecting, our, our revenues that we're projecting are going to carry that on through, through the, the ten or fifteen year process that we have in the model. The other thing on slide twenty that I wanted to mention is with this increase of one and a half percent, we wanted to show you what that effect is on most customers. On the bottom section of that, you'll see a sample billing. In the darker green color in the bottom of that bottom section, it shows you a conservative user of 2,000 gallons, typical residential, which is 8,000 gallons of water and a 6,000 gallon sewer or winter quarter average. It's going to affect them about a dollar forty-six a month. With this, in addition to the increase in the recycling center of 25 cents and the increase of sanitation of 75 cents a month, that's, didn't add it, $2.46 a month, which is about $30 a year at a one and a half percent increase. The next slide, and I'll go back and you can ask me any questions about this, I'll just get through my data and then we'll, because mine's almost done. And the next slide, we wanted to give you where we, where we compare to our peers. Now, we'll say that every utility is unique in how they calculate their fees, how their numbers come out and things like that. We are getting information either from the internet, from their website, or if we call and, and check with them. So how we interpret their rate structure may not be exactly how it's applied, but I will say there are multiple differences and variables in how these things are calculated. And you can see some of them have minimums, some of them don't have minimums, most of them have winter quarter averages. But what I did was I took the numbers and I, I figured out what the average 5,000 gallon a, a month user would be, and that would be about 81.65 total for sewer, just sewer and water, and how that compares to the total of that compared to these other cities. And you can see we're about two-thirds the way up, but if you went back and looked at individual line items in here, like cost per gallon and things like that, our ranking is going to be different every time we sort it differently. So it's really not a matter of where do we fall in this particular number, but you've got to kind of look at some of those other numbers because we might charge less for our meters, but a little bit more for our water, or more for our water and, you know, those types of things. So, but the average of all of these gets, comes out to be about 81.23. We're falling at 81.65, so we feel like that's pretty good. We're not extremely higher than any, any average, we're not extremely lower, so we're kind of right there on, on average.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you're comparing our proposed increased rate.
Yes, this is our proposed increase with their 2023 rate. So they've all probably raised their rates too, so this is just how we're falling with their 2023 rate, with our 2024 rate.
Are we, Debbie is 5.58 or 2023 rate?
Oh, I don't know. I thought it was, maybe not.
I think it's our current.
Oh, no, that's our current rate, Mike. That is our current rate.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
And that's what we're comparing with everyone's current rate.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Because not everyone has made a future rate, so we use current.
So in summary, basically what we're proposing and what we'll be bringing forward to you when we bring back the comprehensive fee schedule is the transfer of the million and a half dollars to the capital reserve for the funding of system enhancements and water main replacements as opposed to having that budgeted out of the operating account, and an increase of one and a half percent to all fees in 2024. What you'll see is a five-year proposal, and we'll be back every year to either adjust that or maintain it however it shakes out after we get some more actual numbers in there. And then Martha and I will stand for any questions.
So as a point of clarification, then, the one and a half percent increase on the 81.65 would be 82.87.
So it really doesn't change our place in the scope of things against our 2023 rates.
Do we have any sense of how we compare to our peers when it comes to the quality of our water lines and our quality of our water plants and the amount of water we have available to them? I mean, you could get very far behind on pipe replacement, couldn't you? Or, you know, not keeping up with the quality of your wastewater plant. So could some of these others be facing costs that, you know, are we ahead of the game, I guess?
Oh, you take a shot at that one, Martha. I think we're well ahead of the game on the wastewater plant because obviously we're upgrading it to meet nutrient removal and spending about 50 million. The water plants, the south water plant came online to give us resiliency and also to use some vested water rights that we have. And actually, in the event of a tornado or something that would cause havoc to our downtown plant, our basic function of life could exist with that amount of water, and hopefully they're far enough apart the tornado doesn't, doesn't get both or whatever natural disaster might come in the future. So I think on the water side and long-term, we've put ourselves in play to have what we think is water through 2050.
I did the water assurance district.
Yeah, and with the water assurance district, we have some, of course, we have to have water in the bank to, to use the water, but in most cases, it's there, so, but I, I don't know what to promise down the road as weather changes and conditions. It's been pretty dry this year and the lake's low, but we're, we're doing fine to date. So I think that part's good. The next big push for improvements to me is our downtown water plant that hasn't been, had a lot of money spent on it since the, about 2000. So we have kind of a list of items that need to be replaced down there because of age, and I think it's our next major maintenance improvement. I don't believe we have a, a treatment process changed there yet, so I think other than some maintenance equipment, but it'll be a large project like we're doing out at the wastewater plant under maintenance. Then the other loose cannon, I think, is maybe biosolids from the wastewater treatment plant and land application, and if there's PFAS or any other chemical they might choose to have different regulations for. So it's just starting to be a topic of discussion, pretty heavy on the water side, which you've been involved with, the groundwater contamination. But I think since it's forever chemicals, it might be in, a portion of that in the biosolids and could drive some changes in the future, but they haven't tackled that yet, so it's something down the road. But I think from that standpoint.
Pesticides, are we screening for those?
Yes, we do. And it used to be atrazine was, was pretty critical, but that, they pretty well have that under control, so I think we're there. Probably our biggest thing is getting all of our, our water quality and water main replacements, getting those caught up. Mike's asked me for some information, and I was surprised when I looked at the areas and how much we've actually accomplished in some of the areas, but we've got more to accomplish, don't, don't get me wrong, but we've made a, a lot of good changes and we, we know the areas we need to work in. It's just trying to get through all of them.
Yeah, Debbie mentioned it earlier in terms of the difficulty of getting projects designed, bid, constructed, but I think from a deferred maintenance standpoint, you know, the trade journals have been talking about it a long time, and the aging of water mains and, and that that's just kind of an impending expense. I think we've done an above-average job in, in terms of factoring that in, anticipating not only water mains, but water towers and pumps and just ongoing system maintenance where I can't speak specifically to our peer communities, but I know more generally just that, that challenge and that expense is an ongoing topic in, in the industry that a lot of people are struggling with.
I'd say we're the leader because I get calls on a regular basis. How are you guys doing this? How are you doing your water main replacements with KDHE and trying to get those projects done? And we're really pushing with KDHE to get, they, they have legislation to where we don't need to send our plans in for plan reviews that we can, if we have the right staff and we do, do our job well on this end, that we don't have to send them in for plan review, which will save us great amounts of time because just a 50-page spec review took about two and a half months. So it's, it's very time sensitive when it goes through KDHE, and they have a, they have a process and they treat us all the same, so I can't say they're unfair, they just have a method. So we have been working on water main replacements, and I'd say it's one of the topics that we've been looking harder over the last six, seven months, trying to find out how can we do more and doing a better analysis in the field. When people call in, we're not doing the status quo, just go flush a hydrant. We're actually going out and grabbing turbidity and trying to decide if person one says this is really bad, well, their sensitivity may be different than somebody else, and by having actual numbers of turbidity, then we have a real data point to work with. So we've, we've done some research and trying to do better on which areas we do, which, which really is the important areas. It's a lot of numbers, but I think we're making some headways. So that's probably a big expansion with our number of feet of pipe. They have 330 miles and a good share of it, like 275 miles, was old cast iron and probably six inch for the most of it. So we know what years, 50s and 60s seems to be the bad pipe, so we've kind of honed in on when those areas were constructed with that age pipe. So we have a lot of research, now it's just putting it in place, so we've made progress. Does that help? Is that, is that what you're after?
Well, I think strategically, we've, we're doing a nice job. That's my overall impression. I just don't have a real sense of what everybody else is doing and.
I think we're, we're a good example because we get a lot of calls on how we're doing things and, and they're, they wish they had a city leaders that would allow them to have the funds to spend to do some of the things we get to do here. So, you know, some of the credit comes back. You have to have the vision to allow it to happen, and not, not all communities have that.
Thank you. Do you have an idea what the cost per foot on a water main is today? Is it skyrocketed?
I did, but have good cost, but if we use, when we bid the projects originally, it was about a hundred dollars a foot for a six-inch pipe to replace it. And that was in the beginning when things were good, I'll say, and we had contractors and materials. And then the last project we bid, it was about 140, 150 dollars, and I think when we worked up on Hill, have to say that Hilldale, that was, I don't have it in front of me, but maybe 250 or 60 dollars a foot. And we have estimates for a couple other areas, Bel Air and up on Third Street, they're in that kind of a number. But maybe if it was a larger project and a competitive bid, maybe it's better, maybe it's worse. That's what our next round of projects, I don't know if they're four million or five million dollars worth, but as soon as KDHE blesses our specs, we'll be able to go out to bid, so.
Yeah, so as we talk about fund balance, we've got the projects designed. If we go out to bid and find that they have that type of inflation, four million could turn into five or six million and hit that reserve balance pretty quick.
You'd mentioned too, a little bit about water meter replacement. Are we due to change out meters?
We replaced them in 2011, 12, and 13. If you were a meter salesman, you would say you should replace them every 10 years. I don't know of any community that does that in, in reality, but if they were selling them, that's what they'd be trying to tell you. And so our last time, we had some meters that were 30 years old, so I'd like to be somewhere between 10 years and 20 years is the reality of it. But we have a performance program with Siemens, and so we pull so many meters every year and send those off to be tested to see if they're staying within their performance standards. So far, we've been real, done real good with those. Pull 150 meters, so pretty broad section across our meters and, or across the city from the small to the large, see if they're measuring accurately because once they get to a point, you know, they are cash register, so it's not like we're not doing anything, we're tracking it.
But it looks like we're paying that debt till 2031 on the meters that are in the system today.
Yes. So water meters, some communities I've seen have 30, 40-year-old meters. We had some that were at least 30-plus years, so it's not, I don't think that's ideal by any means. I think you could be losing dollars on the long run.
They're, they're all compatible with the new building software?
Yes.
It's all tested out. What about your water plant commodities? Has the cost on that leveled out?
Uh, it's a moving target every, we, we bid every year in November, towards the end of the year for the product, and chlorine, for example, tripled. Went from like 500 dollars a ton, 500 and change to 1,700 and some dollars by memory, and some other chemicals were small amounts, but that's, that's a tough one to keep ahead of, and then we've had delivery issues trying to get those products on time because some area might not have it available at their facility, so then they want to ship it out to someplace farther away, which has an additional cost with it. But when you're down to it, it's something you have to have to produce water, so those are, those are a moving target. I think, Mike, you might.
Well, yeah, two things. We talked about carving those out in that, that rate projection as a fixed cost rather than using the 85%, but we felt like there's enough, you know, movement across the, the rest of the budget that we didn't need to do that. I've reached out and tried to have some conversations with hedge investors that do hedging on agricultural commodities and other things to see if they would entertain some type of hedge program with our commodity expenses where you can, and not to get into all the details, but you can get a partner that will invest and will agree on a fixed cost for us as relates to chemicals, and they'll make offsetting purchases so that they make their rate of profit either from the chemicals or some, some other item that moves in, I guess, opposite to what chemicals might in the market. I don't know that they've seen that done municipally, but they're taking a look and going to get back to me.
Does anybody not use chlorine in the United States? Is that just pretty much the way it all works? I've been, I've been in Paris, they use ultraviolet light and oxygen to purify the water. The water tastes fantastic.
There's other, other things available for, for water treatment, there is.
But the, your source water kind of dictates your treatment as well.
It does, and, and of course, you know, our systems are put in for the chlorine is, you know, is or was more, was cost-effective and probably. you know, is or was more, was cost effective and probably still is if you had to buy all new equipment because to produce the ultraviolet light or ozone, a lot of ozone treatment, takes a lot of power to produce that. So you're kind of a trade on that. But ozone is a way I've seen it done in some other facilities.
Does our rate study factor in our, what our housing study is telling us we should probably have online for new housing? And that's quite a few units.
Yeah, it's based more on our past experience. The presumption is if, if we grow at a higher rate, then cost and production capacity is going to grow with that. But for the purpose of the rate study, it's looking more at our past trend than projecting out that increase. Everything will have to increase proportionally based on what we experience.
But each year, we look at that and see if there's great changes. So try to stay, not get in a rut and not raise the rates, but to evaluate it every year. And we spend a lot of time.
Yeah. You may have noticed our water accounts growing and our consumption staying flat, which could be part of that conservation structure. So we're trying to do our best at analyzing that and projecting it going forward.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So I guess staff's looking for direction from the commission as to moving forward with transferring the 1.5 million to capital reserve fund and increasing the rates by one and a half percent. Anyone have an issue with that?
Nope. Sounds good to me.
Okay. We'll move forward with that. With that being said, we will be back here at four o'clock for the regular scheduled commission meeting. Okay. It is four o'clock. I will call the August 7th, 2023 Salina City Commission meeting to order. I will look at city staff for confirmation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has properly been provided.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lakowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Will those who are able please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have no awards or proclamations, so that will bring us to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 4.1, conduct a public hearing on the advisability of the issuance of $22 million in taxable industrial revenue bonds for Beck's Superior Hybrids of Atlanta.
Okay. Again, due to the fact that I have a conflict due to my business, I am going to turn this item over to Vice Mayor Longbine.
Now open the public hearing.
Good afternoon. I'm Mitch Robinson, Executive Director of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization. We're glad to be here today to talk about a project that's been on the boards for discussion for quite a while. And I was going through my notes. My first contact with this project was December 16th of '21. So it's been a little time getting through the process. But the company, we were reached, contacted by a Realtor from Kansas City, who's now, we, we've been working this project locally with Jeff Mays of Compro. And in April 19th of '22, the company brought in their team of, of professionals to come learn about the community, spend a good afternoon looking at property across the community along Interstate 70 and Interstate 135. And at that point, kind of got zeroed in on a couple of pieces of property. And during that time, we got to know the company a little bit. Beck's Hybrids is based out of, it's Atlanta, Indiana. And they have had an operation and, and, well, they're all over the country. You'll find out about this as the company is growing westward. And now this is their time to expand here to Kansas and supply people here with their products. And we're really excited about that. But they've been working on this. The state of Kansas has been involved. The company has worked very closely with K-State in terms of some of the agricultural issues of different seeds, also discussing potential workforce through the college interns as well. So I'm just going to have Sonny Beck, the CEO, owner of the company, come up and he's going to give you a few minutes about the project. And then some of his staff is going to talk about the building, the land, and offer any technical questions concerning the site. And then we can talk more about the bonds as we move ahead since Sarah Steele is here and, and Sean, of course, has worked through this for your all staff. So we're excited about it and we're here to seek approval for the bonds today. Thank you all.
Sonny? Thank you, Mitch, and to the commissioners and, and also to, to the mayor who's beyond, beyond outside right now. For we appreciate you inviting us here. I'm a third generation of my grandfather who settled on 80 acres in central Indiana and not too far from I-70. And then my grand, my father came along and in 1937, they started this thing called Beck Hybrids, 86 years ago. So I'm third generation CEO. My son, oldest son is president. And then we have five, five of the 13 grandchildren are now working in some, in part of the business and so forth. So we're pretty much a family-owned business and we will always be a family-owned business. That's set up that way. And so we've been blessed really with great employees, have 950 employees today and then several dealers throughout the U.S. that are individual ownership, many of their, their farmers, their businesses, about 1,000 of those. And so as we move 30 miles at a time from, from when I got there in 1964, it tends to amount to about 15 states now. And it's about 85% of the corn and soybean acres in the United States. And so we are fortunate to be blessed with, with being the third-largest seed company now selling corn and soybeans in the U.S. Only two companies sell more than we do, and you probably know those names already. So we like to make a statement when we, we move to an area and you'll see one of our examples, Effingham on I-70. Another one, we just built a goner of Nebraska, just up the road. We just opened that last week. And so these are, these are facilities for distribution, but more importantly, they're facilities for helping farmers succeed. We do, we need acreage, about 150 acres at a location to do tests, which then turn into how you can help farmers farm better in Kansas, not Indiana, but Kansas. And so these are things that the universities used to have a lot of time to do. They don't anymore. We do cooperate with K-State. And so that's what we're about, is helping farmers succeed. And good Lord's bless us. And I'm going to turn it over to the next part of the program. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm a little taller than he is. Caleb Bruner, Facilities Manager for Beck's Hybrids. And I'll be helping oversee what is hopefully the construction of this project. Buildings, I'm here to talk a little bit about that. And yeah, we've got three buildings, 96,000 square feet. It's actually three buildings linked together. We actually are very strong partners with Bayland Manufacturing out of Columbus, Nebraska. Maybe familiar. I'm not sure how common they are in this area. But a partnership that Sonny would have started back in the early 70s with their S-Band building, which is a freestanding building with an arched roof. Very soon, people very much know that, that building profile from, again, what is hopefully our new facility. So a large part of that is warehouse for the distribution piece that Sonny talked about. There is also a 10,000-square-foot office space to it. So we do have five people that live in that office doing various activities, large meeting room. And then something that we still very much take pride in as a company is that, that front counter experience for the sales. That's something that, yeah, we very much still, still take a lot of pride in. We definitely always want to provide that. And that, that offers that in this, that local contact here in the area. Also additionally to that, so Sonny mentioned the Practical Farm Research. So there's the typical shop needs. So Practical Farm Research, it's, it's, they've got equipment to work on. So they'll have a, a nice shop area for that to be in. And then all that effort goes into where the majority of the property will be, will be plots. So test plots, testing various practical things that we want to be able to, to show the results of, to various practical things that we want to be able to, to show the results of to local customers. And something that, a large part of what you will see from Ohio, so our entrance to our site will come from Ohio, even though we are going to situate the buildings onto where they're very presentable from the interstate. That visibility was very important to us. But what we will have up and down Ohio will be very manicured, very neat plots, you know, signs, you know, giving information about the plot that's growing there. Something that we very much take a lot of pride in how it's presented. So even though we will still be an ag-based operation along your, your corridor of Ohio Street, we, we do plan to have that be a very presentable thing for the city once people make that exit off to head towards downtown. Around the building, there is quite a bit of hardscape, a lot of concrete, planting beds. There will be, because of the position we chose to put the buildings and that presentation, we wanted to, basically our logistics side, you know, people on the interstate, we want to make sure they know where they're going. We will have a fairly long drive back to our site. But we also see that as an opportunity along the south side of Foley's with some trees and various things that you've maybe seen in some renderings that we've handed out various times to various groups. So if you've seen that, yes, very much the plan, very much. We want to be very presentable, not only to the city, but our customers as well. So, thank you.
I guess at this point, if y'all have questions, we can ask them now or later after, after all the public comments made?
I thought I might just also give a little bit of additional information, just because this has been going on for a while. Just so you remember, so Mitch alluded to the fact that this really started at the end of 2021. And then, if you remember, in March, we brought this issue before the city commission to get direction. And the city commission gave us direction to go ahead and go forward with this. And then we had a meeting scheduled in April for consideration of these IRBs. And we had the notices sent out. However, at that point in time, Beck's was able to purchase the property, which allows them to put the property along I-35. And that was an advantageous for them, I believe, as well as for the city. So that led to another delay due to the fact that that is an island, which is not contiguous with the rest of the city limits. So we then had to get the approval for Saline County for that in order to get that annexation completed. So that has been completed. And that kind of brings us to where we're at today. So this was all set up kind of before, but due to the ability to have this better positioning for the property, we've been able to, you know, it took a little bit longer, but it does allow for better visibility off I-70. And so the main access will be off of Ohio, if you remember, for the annexation that we had before you. But the building will be visible there off of I-70. So I wanted to give you a little bit of background and history on that, too.
Did bond counsel have something?
Thank you. I'm Sarah Steele with Gilmore &amp; Bell. We're bond counsel to the city. And I thought I might just explain what we're doing here today. The public hearing is a requirement under state law. In advance of the public hearing, there is a cost-benefit analysis prepared. And I believe that the gentleman that prepared that, from Wichita State, is he on?
He is available online through Zoom.
Okay.
If there's any questions.
Jeremy Hill of the Center for Economic, I don't know.
The National Business Research.
Good, Mitch. He, he is on, and he can speak to any questions you may have regarding that cost-benefit analysis, this document here. And once the, once the public is given opportunity to speak, you'll close the public hearing, and then consider a resolution of intent. That is simply an expression of your intent to issue bonds in the future and to grant a property tax exemption, sales tax exemption on the construction materials. And all of these are subject to a performance agreement that requires a certain level of employment that gradually increases over the next three to four years to a seven, seven total in that agreement. So I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the bonds. But since this is the public hearing, if you'd like to proceed to see if there's any public comment, I think that might be appropriate.
I appreciate your comments, Sarah. I guess I'm going to put Mitch on the spot. We've talked about this project before, but I think we need to provide a project overview as it relates to employment and dollars and the cost-benefit analysis, please.
Yeah. With, with the additional property that was acquired, the project went from a $21 million investment number to approximately 22 million. So it's good for the community more money being spent here. Employment-wise, we're looking at seven people initially over these, well, I won't say initially, over that first five years, five years, period, to get up to, up to speed. And that's, a lot of that is, of course, the constructing of the building. There's a gap there. And then as the company grows, this will be warehouse people, this will be salespeople to a smaller extent. And then it will be also ag people who will be out managing the food pots, doing the test evaluations of the pots and that sort of thing. Wage levels, these will definitely be above our normal, you know, we're at $17 on our average here in the county. Where these positions will be higher than that. I don't have that information here with me. I don't think it's here. So the ratio, we always look at, I do have it, the ratio is, that we always look at is, you know, the cost-benefit ratio. And we're looking at, for the city, we're looking at 1.28. So we want to be minimum always 1.0. So we're above that, 1.28. For the city, the county is, is always lower than the city, and that's at 1.05. State of Kansas, more taxes there, they're at 3.73. And then the school system, that's 305 there, is at 1.41. So those are the, the benefit cost ratios for each of the four taxing districts. And of course, as we mentioned, we've got Jeremy here to answer any technical questions. In terms of, trying to see that wage levels. I don't think this has that. Brad, can you, off the top of your head, do you?
105 is the average.
Yeah.
Are those on page two of the blue sheet?
So I'm, yes, I'm, sorry, yes. So you see your average wages there. So the first year, you've got higher-level people, and that's obviously why that number is so elevated. And then you get into the other positions, which are all still good, good wage levels for the community. So.
Any questions for commissioners?
Yeah. And we've heard about the project before, and I'm certainly in favor of having as many big companies call Salina home as possible, because the more they call Salina home, the more other companies will be interested in calling Salina home. Well, somebody's figured out something about this place. Let's go look. For, obviously, for a, for the amount of tax, I'll just call, I don't use the word abatement, but forbearance. If you do that, you know, per job, those become very expensive jobs. I see seven positions mentioned here, but when you look at sales, warehouse, work, ag plots, I'm assuming that number is actually more than seven, or there are a lot of people doing several jobs. Where does Salina and Saline County realize, you know, the other aspect of the economic benefit is, you know, like sales tax on products sold, visitors? Yeah, I believe there is some mention of, I'm, I grew up in the city, so you got, I'm going to use the wrong terms. But these gatherings, fairs where people come in, exhibition, demo, those, I'm assuming, particularly if they're more than one day, generate some overnight business for the hospitality industry.
Brad, or Sonny wants to address that. Yeah, those, those are held in, at every one of their facilities. I'm familiar with one in Kentucky, where I'm close, grew up close to. And they have, you know, it's a very beautiful tents, and lots of farmers come from across the country or the region. And then they also fly folks in as well. So I'll look where I had a few.
Yeah. And no, thank you for the opportunity, Brad Fruth with Beck's Hybrids. So a lot of our visitors, we obviously have an annual field show that, that you've heard us talk about. Last week, we opened our site in Goner. So we'll have anywhere from 1,300 to 1,500 farmers come and visit us for that, for that day. As Caleb mentioned, there's also going to be a small conference center here. So we have independent farmer dealers that live amongst the whole state of Kansas. And so this is going to be our hub. And the reason why we selected the, the county here and the city of Salina was to be closer to the middle of Kansas, so that all the dealers from everywhere, from Goodland to Alatha, can all come here and congregate there. So we'll have a couple of meetings per year here, where we'll bring all those dealers in, tell them about all the new products, all about the research. So our visitor numbers included in, included all of that. Our state incentive package is a little larger than the one that you see here. So there will be more jobs created, but it's more of a statewide effort, with Salina being, again, our core. These are people that are going to show up here every single day. But we do have more jobs that we're creating within the state that are more sales jobs and agronomists, which are, which are service roles. But this is our plan, is to base all of our Kansas operations here out of the city of Salina. Does that answer your question, sir?
100%.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Other questions?
No questions. I have a couple and a comment. I drove by your new facility just outside of York, Nebraska, a couple of weeks ago on I-80. Is that the one you're talking about that just opened?
Yes.
Okay. Beautiful facility.
That's what this is going to look like.
It's impressive.
We don't know, if we, copycat, we don't know how to design it.
Who's going to farm that land? I guess my, the, the test plots and stuff really took my eye.
The plots themselves are, are done by our practical farm research team. And they, then, we have about five of those individuals at our home location, and there'll be three to four that will work here. Most, at least two to three of them are, are more in a full-time area. Okay, they will be farming that land with smaller equipment, larger equipment, but only four acres at a, at a field, you see. And then it tests that against this practice, against this practice, against this other practice. It's all about helping the farmers of Kansas here. And the droughty conditions you have, we'll also have some irrigated plots, and so that we can compare the vantage of that, not advantage. And so when we put all those plots together, if people want to see all the drier areas plots, like Nebraska tends to be, and also then all of them from the rest of the, the U.S. But these are all done for free. They're all done, and we publish the material in a 300-page book every year, and it's online. Anybody in the U.S. can look at that. And you don't have to, you don't have to buy one, you know, you don't have to buy seed from us. When we thought about how we're going to survive in 1990, when all these 300 seed companies we knew were going to consolidate down, how will we survive? Well, I like to do practical farm research. I like to learn more about stuff every day. That's what we're going to do. We're going to help farmers succeed. And we might be selling seed to support our habit, but we're going to help farmers succeed. And so by being helping, helping others, it'll probably turn out okay for you. But if it doesn't, you still did the right thing. And that's what has allowed our company to grow. We've been blessed with 13% growth through most of our career, my career going way back. And now since 1990, it's the same thing. 12% growth, if you, if any of you are bankers, the rule 72, if you are growing by 12%, or if you have 12% interest, it takes you six, you divide it into 72, it takes six years to double the size of your company. Like, 12% doesn't seem like much, but our doggone company doubles every six years. And that means that if you compound interest, it triples in 10.3 years. And so we've gradually just moved a little farther from the home base to where we're out here now. And so we, we've been blessed, and we're happy to do this testing for your farmers. And cooperate a lot with K-State, with Purdue, who has a really good program, too. And K-State has a really good program, yet most estates do not have that good a program. But we'll be doing tests and have been with them, so we can help the farmers of Kansas. So again, it's about the whole state. We will have several, with having 1,000 dealers, right now, there's probably 20 to 30 in Kansas already. People have snuck over the border and got back before we caught them. I say that because we've only been selling in the, in the eastern part of Kansas now for about three or four years. And, and so some people kept buying, you know, from other areas that weren't officially in our, what we thought we could service them. So, but it has been, Kansas has been great for us, and people are wanting to know this information. And then you can help them place seed in the right spot, in the right part of their farm. And that's what we're all about, and people love it.
So your dealers, they're independent operations?
Yes. The dealers would be independent operations, yes.
And on the property out there, does that come with water rights?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And the construction timeline, how long does that take to build a facility?
Probably about 15 months.
15, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yep. Thank you.
We would, we would sometimes hope a little bit quicker, but let's say 15 months, because it's a, it's a massive project.
We look forward to the grand opening.
We are looking forward to it, too. Because that places this, so we, we like the curve there that we're going to be on. And like you say, this can be a high point of people saying, I know where your, I know where Salina, Kansas is, that's where your place is. And so we've been really blessed with having that. Effingham, Illinois. We also have one in, in Ohio, Columbus, Ohio, on the interstate. And then on 80, the one at Goner, which is by Lincoln. And then over at Colfax, Iowa, that would be near Des Moines. Those are our two that are on 80. And then these on 70. And that pretty well gets us through the Midwest. And we draw a four or five-hour circle around each one of those. It's what we can service for four to five-hour driving time. So this puts us pretty much to the western part of Kansas, and there's not too much seed, or seed corn grown west of there. So.
And that's all you do is corn and beans?
Corn and beans. We, we do, yes, those are our major crops. We do wheat, and we also now do milo. We don't do cotton. We do sorghum.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. We appreciate you listening to us, and we want to be part of the community. Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Beck's Hybrid Seeds. Bring it back to the commission for action.
Vice Mayor, I move we approve Resolution 23-8123. I hope that with our change here, I'm reading this all right. Are we still initiating the industrial revenue bonds as it appears in 6.2, the original blue sheet we got? Approve Resolution 23-8123 to initiate industrial revenue bond financing for Beck's Superior Hybrids of Atlanta.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 23-8123 to initiate industrial revenue bond financing for Beck's Hybrid Seeds of Atlanta, Indiana. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Welcome back, Mayor Hoppick.
Thank you for being here, gentlemen. Welcome to Kansas, or to the central Kansas.
Okay, thank you. That will bring us to consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. That will bring us to consent agenda.
Item five point one, approve the minutes of the meeting of July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Item five point two, consider awarding the bid for project number two-three-zero-two-four, twenty-twenty-three sidewalk repairs to Inco USA LLC of Aletha in the amount of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-nine cents with a one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-four cents, five percent construction contingency for the total project authorization not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-three cents and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Inco USA LLC of Aletha upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. And item five point three, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a modified right-of-way user agreement with Delta Communications LLC doing business as Clearwave Fiber to allow the installation of fiber optic and related facilities within utility easements in the city of Salina for both commercial and residential services.
Thank you. Is there an item a commissioner would like to have removed or any addition or corrections to the minutes?
Yeah, Mayor, like five point three, remove.
Okay, we will remove item five point three. The others? If not, I would accept a motion to approve items five point one and five point two.
Move we approve consent agenda items five point one and five point two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items five point one, five point two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. We will ask, what'd they do with mine?
Sean Hennessy.
Sean, I guess to address item five point three. There it is.
Yeah, Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. Commissioners, what this is, this is a modification of the existing agreement that we have with Clearwave. Just giving you a little bit of history again. We originally considered this, and you approved a an agreement with Clearwave that only allowed the installation of fiber to be in the right-of-way. And the right-of-way typically is located to the front of homes. And following that, Nextech requested, and we the city commission gave policy guidance to allow both access to the utility easement as well as the right-of-way for fiber installations. The utility easement is generally to the rear of the home and to the side. So what this modification to the agreement with Clearwave does is treats them the same as Nextech was and allows them to access both utility easement and the right-of-way for the installation of fiber. I wish I could say that that would guarantee that there would never be any disruptions whenever there is this installation of fiber. But it does potentially allow for a greater number of options in the installation of the fiber. Some people strongly prefer, we've heard from them, that they would prefer all the fiber to go through the utility easement. We've had other people very strongly indicate they would prefer that all the fiber installation that go through the right-of-way. This is really a decision that has to be made by the fiber company, but we have to hold them accountable to make sure that they do the necessary repairs and everything that are required under the user agreement. So the only modification to this agreement is does allow the installation of that fiber in the utility easement area.
I don't I don't know if that answered your the concern you had or?
That certainly addressed part of that thing is as additional properties are opened up to allow installation, people have some confusion as to what can go in the back, what can go up front, or if it's equal for both. But could you simple, you give a simple differentiation between cable services, you know, those that can be franchised and those that aren't? Because we're talking about cable and then just internet. And of course, cable programming comes across internet now. I mean, it just seems to be a big blur in my mind as to
Sure.
how you distinguish the two of these, because they're treated differently.
And they are, even though the technology is starting to merge in many ways, and this is happening more and more, the traditional difference has been there is a requirement for a franchise agreement for telecommunications. And the way that telecommunications was defined was through the, I'm trying to remember now the technical term for it, but essentially the old school phone lines, the way we used to receive phone calls that way. This is where the technology is merging. You can see now what's called voice over IP lines and otherwise. But essentially, the way that the Clearwave has structured themselves, and this is not a decision that frankly, the city of Salina gets to make, this is a decision at the federal government level and at the state level. The franchise agreement, due to the way that they're utilizing this technology, is not subject to a franchise fee and requiring a franchise agreement. Nextech, if you remember when we talked with them, they already had a franchise agreement. And that was because of the way that they had structured some of their other technology when they had approached it in the past. However, because Clearwave is solely installing fiber to homes, they are not subject to a franchise fee requirement. And that's why the even though oftentimes the technology looks the same, the way it is currently defined, the installation of fiber to homes is not subject to a franchise fee. And so that's why there is not a franchise fee for Clearwave.
So the definitions of what type of service they're providing are too old for what they're actually. But it just sounds like the rules we're using are thirty years too old to separate the two, because you could get the same service from either one of these two companies.
It the the requirements and the statutes of both the state and the federal level are very antiquated. And then there has been some modifications on top of them to allow this to basically mandate that local communities have to grant access to the right-of-way. It doesn't eliminate it, but it severely restricts the city's ability in the right-of-way. And it also has been very clear that it directs the cities to essentially not charge a franchise fee or other taxes for the installation of fiber. And so that's that's one of the reasons why Clearwave is is opting to only go for the services that they're providing so that they're not subject to that franchise fee. That does not mean that they have free rein in the right-of-way. We still have the ability to police the right-of-way. And as you've all heard, there have been a number of instances, whenever there is a very large fiber rollout in any community, there is almost inevitably, I it's almost like a software rollout. I've never seen one never not have a glitch. So the main thing is is to follow up on that, to listen to any complaints or issues that may come up and and use the authority that the city still has to be able to police that right-of-way, which would include now, if you approve this modified agreement, the utility easement as well.
And I can understand the access to the space. Just if I can make a phone call or watch I Love Lucy on either one of the two, I just don't see why they're treated separately. Not, yeah, no, it's not at our level. I understand that too. But as far as, you know, the way we regulate where they go and whether we can franchise them, there just seems to be a big unnecessary disconnect.
And that may be, but that's, yeah, that's really all we're discussing today is allowing them, you know, to to modify their agreement to allow them to use the utility easements and and
Right, but we're treating them, they were being treated differently because of the nature of what type service they were providing. We've now said that doesn't matter what you're presenting, you can put it in the front or the back.
If you recall, the Nextech conversation previously, they had some access to, they had a request to access utility easements. And your conclusion was, to be equitable, we needed to make this amendment to the Clearwave agreement to put them on a level playing field with Nextech. So that's that's why this issue is back.
Because Clearwave did not ask to use utility easements initially, correct?
Correct.
So they just asked to use the right-of-way. And so since Nextech was using the utility easements to be consistent, we decided to do that. But again, the city staff still has the ability to say yes or no to either Nextech or to Clearwave that they can use a utility easement, correct?
Yes, the the utility easements are treated differently than the right-of-ways. The reason why, much as the mayor just outlined, is we wanted to remain competitively neutral between them. And so we want to treat Nextech and Clearwave the same. And Clearwave, the mayor is correct, did not initially request access to the utility easement area. But they did request after Nextech indicated there and the commission gave a policy guidance to allow access to the utility.
Do we just in the future just need to change our rules so we don't have to keep giving exceptions? And I mean, just any type of communication, you can put it in the front and back and be done with it in perpetuity?
Right. With this policy direction, that helps us if if we have need for another right-of-way management agreement or another fiber provider agreement, then we would factor it in. With Clearwave, we took that action before Nextech made their request. But I want to clarify one thing. I don't want to create the impression that staff's in a position on a property by property basis or a citizen by citizen request basis to turn away work in a utility easement. I mean, we can have some input on its location, how that installation occurs. But I don't think we're in a position to turn them away in any particular location if they're working with any utility easement. You know?
So right now, if a third company came, we would still have to go through granting them an exception or an agree. We couldn't just from here on forward, anything that people communicate on can go front or back and be done with?
Well, yeah, if a third company came along, they would need a right-of-way management agreement. And from this point forward, our agreement would take into account utility easements as well.
Yes. It was just the timing on this because Clearwave was first, only the right-of-way, then Nextech, which was right-of-way and utility easement. This places them in the same. But in the future, any new potential fiber would be treated the same as both Nextech and Clearwave.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure we didn't have to do this again. Yeah.
We may have to do a right-of-way agreement, but it'll contemplate utilities.
But but in the future, the agreement would include both of these.
Okay.
Does anyone have any information or data on the percentage of completion of their build out?
Jim Toich, Public Works Director, probably has the most day-by-day involvement. He might have some insight.
Jim Toich, Director of Public Works. What I can tell you is Clearwave is rapidly wrapping up their twenty-twenty-three installations. They have identified, I believe it's thirteen additional fiber deployment areas for twenty-twenty-four. And I think three of which, some of the work will begin in October, November timeframe of this year. But the the actual laying of the fiber will not occur till next year. So it it is continuing at the pretty much the way that it has happened in twenty-twenty-three. They'll start over there at the, they're coming to the conclusion of their twenty-twenty-three budget for this project. And they'll have another about approximately five point three million of in in installation in twenty-twenty-four.
And they're covering the entire city? Is that correct?
That is their plan. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back for action.
Mayor move, well, the way it's worded, move to authorize the city manager to execute a modified right-of-way user agreement with Delta Communications LLC doing business as Clearwave Fiber to allow the installation of fiber optic and related facilities within utility easements in the city of Salina for both commercial and residential services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda item five point three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passes five zero. That will lead us to administration.
Item six point one, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Salina Baseball Enterprises relating to Wilbur Field and James Matson Field.
Mr. Scrag.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As I'm sure you're aware, we previously entered into an agreement with Salina Baseball Enterprises as related to Dean Evans Field. And that work was is completed and is in use. That was a public-private partnership between Salina Baseball Enterprises and the city. They initially approached us about raising four and a half million dollars on their part, asking us to make four and a half million dollars worth of improvements to related baseball and softball facilities, which we kind of got hung up on COVID and had concerns about performance of transient guest tax. So we are still in the process of, we put turf into Bill Burke, we're designing drainage at Berkeley Family Recreation Area. We will be bringing bids to you shortly on a number of the other improvements to backstops and dugouts and items at Bill Burke. So I mention all that because that's an example of a public-private partnership with Salina Baseball Enterprises generally, as well as there was a very specific agreement in place for Dean Evans and the improvement of Dean Evans Stadium. Following that then, Salina Baseball Enterprises approached us and made a presentation to you in March of this year related to improvements to Wilbur Field, the field just north of Dean Evans, and possibly improvements to Matson. Coming out of that study, and so they proposed at that time, an estimated project cost of three point four million and proposed a seventy-thirty split, seventy percent funded by Salina Baseball Enterprises and thirty percent funded by the city. And at that time, you instructed staff to commence negotiations and bring that back to you for essentially taking them up on on their proposed project and approach. So as I mentioned, there was the Dean Evans Agreement previously. That was relied on heavily to be the starting point of negotiations and the agreement as relates to Wilbur Field and Matson Field. Attached to that agreement is an exhibit A that itemizes the the scope of that project. And you should have at your seat an updated exhibit A. I'm going to give Kenny Hancock the opportunity on behalf of Baseball Enterprises to address you generally, but I'm going to, when the time comes, ask him to walk you through that scope as well. As a quick, as part of the staff report, I took the liberty of just excerpting a number of provisions out of the agreement. And you may notice that they're not in the same order as as the agreement addresses them, in my mind, anyway. This was a logical order to help you walk through it, but it may not seem as logical to you as it did to me. We'll see. So the things that I wanted to highlight for your attention is we identified Wilbur Field renovations. And as part of the negotiation, we tried to, and that included adding lights to Dean Evans Field, which was something that wasn't able to be accomplished with the Dean Evans Project. So in that whole inventory, there's an estimated cost of three million, one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars, I believe. And Baseball Enterprises is agreeing to fund two million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars of that. The prior to commencing the project, they're agreeing to provide to the city written certification of that they have the amount on hand, whether it's pledges and lines of credit or whatever the case may be, but essentially demonstrating that they have sufficient resources to cover their financial commitment. They also approached us as part of the original project for Dean Evans about naming rights as related to Berkeley Family Recreation Area. And at that time, we went through the process to identify the entirety of what was then East Crawford Recreation Area as eligible for renaming. And so we've taken the initial steps as it relates to our naming guidelines to make that eligible. Again, Mr. Hancock may be able to speak to it in more specifics, but part of their intention is possibly renaming Wilbur Field and relocating the Wilbur Field name to another facility. My understanding is that they've been in contact with the family of the Wilbur family. And the agreement provides that they'll provide written confirmation that the family concurs with with any proposed renaming or relocation of the name. So the city then, our thirty percent share of the project equates to nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So if we're right on on point in terms of the dollars, that would be the city's contribution. It does, the agreement does can anticipate our share going up to a maximum of one million dollars if the if Salina Baseball Enterprises raises additional funds to have their equivalent seventy percent share. City funding, and this was something that we negotiated as part of this agreement, and the intention was to try to isolate improvements to Wilbur Field that are basic, are kind of our deferred are basic, um, are kind of our deferred maintenance items, things that we would be facing as part of our, uh, ongoing maintenance responsibility regardless of, of whether the, the other pri, items and elements of the project are done. Um, so essentially, trying to attach our dollars to bare-bones type improvements, recognizing Baseball Enterprises wants to take this project to a, a whole nother level, um, which is commendable in terms of additional amenities and improvements. So, uh, the city funding is attached to, um, identified elements for the Wilbur Field project, and then we will make direct payment of invoices to contractors related to those elements. And both in the agreement and the staff report, it's itemized there, uh, items A through F. So, it's general site civil work at Wilbur Field, uh, stadium utilities, playing field lighting at Dean Evans, um, playing field lighting at Wilbur Field, fencing, excluding the backstop and netting system, which, uh, Baseball Enterprises has some, um, thoughts in mind there. And then to kind of round out our financial contribution, a, ha, a, a share of the bullpens at Wilbur Field, not the entire expense, but that then gets the city's contribution to that, that 30% share, uh, dollar amount that we identified. So, um, you know, the bulk of, of those expenses are lights at Dean Evans and lights at Wilbur Field. As you may recall, that's just kind of an ongoing challenge for our facilities, whether it's baseball, soccer, whatever the case may be. Um, if, after completion of the Wilbur, if, uh, field project scope, there is, is funding remaining, then the, the agreement contemplates the possibility of, of tackling improvements at, at Matson Field. And so, it, it does contemplate the possibility of a $300,000, uh, expense at, at Matson, but that essentially presumes fundraising above and beyond that initial scope for Wilbur. Um, then the agreement goes into a number of scenarios about cost overruns or cost underruns, and whether those occur with the city elements or the, the Baseball Enterprise elements. Um, I'd be happy to walk you through those in great detail, but essentially, if the city realizes, if, if the city items realize cost underruns, then that money would be held in abeyance and see where Baseball Enterprises ends up on their items. We agree to have a joint conversation if, if, uh, the city items come in under, uh, what was expected, while the Baseball Enterprises items come in over, then that joint conversation will be about whether it's appropriate to use any of the city savings essentially for the remaining, um, uh, elements that Baseball Enterprises is tackling. That's not with a scope expansion, that's just trying to address kind of balancing the budget. Conversely, um, if there's overruns, then the first thing is to take a look at whether Baseball Enterprise items have any cost underruns that can offset that, and then secondly, looking to Baseball Enterprises, whether they wish to raise additional funds, uh, to cover that overrun. So, I, I think, I want to be sure to give Baseball Enterprises credit that they're, they're at risk, or it's, it's their discretionary decision if things come in over expense on the city side, we're not being asked to contribute above our original commitment, we're looking to Baseball Enterprises to see if they have savings on other items or whether they're willing to raise additional funds. Um, that's kind of that whole same approach in reverse. If, um, Baseball Enterprises realizes overruns or underruns, we, again, have a conversation about how the city items played out, whether there's any city, um, funding for those items that could be available for, for the Baseball Enterprise items. In the event that there's savings on either one of our part and no need for additional expense, uh, covering additional expenses, that then frees up those funds to, um, start talking about whether we can afford any Matson, uh, improvements to Matson Field. Um, the one other thing I would tell you with respect to the overruns and underruns is there's an old, uh, a continued, um, acknowledgement that priority is given to those items A through F that are kind of the, the more basic items if value engineering becomes necessary. So, that, that was a quick run-through of a lot of the overrun and underrun items. The other thing that I would note is both the Dean Evans Agreement and this agreement provide that as it relates to design, construction, installation of the project, that there's administrative oversight on the part of the city manager with the advice of the, of a design advisory group that was in place for the Dean Evans Project. It's a, it's a little bit more customized, um, for this project in that Kansas Wesleyan University, uh, contributed to Dean Evans, they've not been asked to contribute to this project, so they're not part of that design advisory group. Um, and then it acknowledges that Baseball Enterprises will serve as a contracting party for the Baseball Enterprise elements, and they shall serve in the lead role of all those items that are provided in a bullet list there in the staff report and itemized in the, the agreement itself. We also, by way of the agreement, acknowledge the post-contracting role of Baseball Enterprises and, uh, give them some latitude within the approved scope to, uh, deal with things that come up on a daily basis, uh, provided that it doesn't result in a substantive alteration of the scope of any individual element. So, if, you know, day-by-day, issue-by-issue, things come up, Baseball Enterprises needs to coordinate with us, but they have, uh, discretion to, uh, sort those out, provided that we're not making significant changes to, uh, the intended and agreed-upon scope. The Dean Evans Agreement included provisions about scheduling of, of Dean Evans Field. This agreement replicates that again, basically says it'll be at the same terms as exists, uh, the existing Dean Evans Agreement, with the exception that priorities not given to Kansas Wesleyan, again, on the basis that they were asked to contribute to Dean Evans, but they weren't asked to contribute to, uh, Wilbur. I did have a conversation with President Thompson with Kansas Wesleyan, letting him know that was, um, the, the case, um, and confirm that that doesn't change their status at Dean Evans, it, it only relates to, um, Wilbur Field, and he acknowledged that their use is, is focused on Dean Evans. Um, the other thing that is, uh, deviation from kind of the Dean Evans approach is Baseball Enterprises asks that their fees be waived for a 10-year period. Um, the agreement includes language that in recognition, recognition of the relationship between the intent of the user fees to fund maintenance and, and future field maintenance and the significant contribution that Baseball Enterprises is making, they get the benefit of a fee waiver for that 10-year period. There's also a provision for a graduated u, uh, user fee schedule in the Dean Evans Agreement that recognizes the financial contributions that, that different parties may, had, made to that project, Baseball Enterprises, um, via the school, USD 305 and, and Baseball Enter, uh, and Kansas Wesleyan. Uh, again, that is, is applied here with the exception of Kansas Wesleyan. So, that's kind of the mechanics of the agreement. I've touched on the finances, um, so our commitment by way of this agreement would be at a minimum $932,867, which is the 30% share of that scope and that, that project cost estimate. In the event that, that Baseball Enterprises raises additional funds beyond their, their baseline commitment in the agreement, our 30% share could raise to, then, $1 million and not exceed that million dollars. Um, in terms of how to fund this, staffs identified a few options for your consideration. Um, we could debt finance it, uh, using the transient guest tax, recognizing that the performance of the transient guest tax currently is not enough to make that full debt, annual debt payment, and it would take as much as a 30 to 35% increase in revenue to, to get us to that point. And I, I guess I should back up and say that, uh, the, the, uh, amount of the annual payment, I believe is $140,000, uh, is our estimated expense. Um, and so, the other option that you would have is you, you could fund it fully out of park fun, uh, park maintenance fund. Um, I'm sorry, bear with me, my printout cut off on a page. Um, you could fund it out of the general fund reserves, um, or some alternate source. Debbie Pack is here and can speak to kind of the specifics of the performance of the transient guest tax and our different, uh, options. The, I guess the value of possibly treating it as some, as a debt finance project is that creates a, an annual obligation that could prioritize transient guest tax revenue as the first source of that payment, and then we could identify the backstop of if transient guest tax are insufficient, uh, where we might want to take that from. My suggestion would be that, be the park maintenance fund. Um, the conversation that Debbie and I had was, we may not have to actually debt finance it with bonds and incur interest, we could treat it as an internal loan, um, and structure it in a way that kind of targets transient guest tax revenue, excess transient guest tax revenue going to this expense first. Um, and, I want to make sure I haven't missed anything. Um, oh, the other option is you did set aside funds, uh, as part of your, as part of your strategic planning exercise two years ago for some segregated uses and, um, things that were in that, that itemization that have not been expended or committed are, uh, you had $500,000 to transfer to the River Project, you had $500,000 to transfer to the debt service fund, and then there was a million dollars set aside for infill housing, there was a million dollars set aside for a combination of the facility audit that we were conducting, and then you bifurcated that with the possibility of childcare. So, any of those, essentially, um, Rescue Act funds that we, uh, set aside as, as covering our revenue losses could be available if you wanted to reprioritize them. Um, I'd be happy to discuss that further and, and, unless Debbie's help there. Um, so, your options before you today are, uh, you could approve the agreement as presented, you could, uh, vote to approve it with amendments, you could postpone consideration and provide us additional direction to come back with, uh, any additional information that you might like. You could take no action, which would result in not approving the agreement and, uh, ideally provide further direction, but you wouldn't have to in that regard. Um, one other thing that I, I should mention is you have at your seat, uh, an updated Exhibit A to the agreement, which is the scope. You have an, uh, a Exhibit D, which is, uh, the reporting form, and then there are a handful of small, uh, revisions to the agreement that we identified that I'm going to ask, uh, City Legal Counsel Greg Bengston to walk you through. I did not, um, provide a red line and, and print that out, I think they're fairly minor, but did want to make you aware of those. So, uh, yeah, let Greg speak, then I'll ask Kenny to come and address you, and then I think we're ready to take questions.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I might explain first, and, uh, for my reason for bouncing in and out of your meeting earlier. Uh, Mr. Beck, depending upon the action that you took, wanted to go ahead and sign the performance agreement, and among, uh, the city clerk and, uh, bond counsel and me, I was certainly the more expendable, so that's what I was doing, was getting them lined up so he could get that document signed for us. The, uh, there are just really three things to make note of in terms of the agreement. If you look at, uh, Section 1.2, Subparagraph A, there's a $10 typo there. Uh, that number, uh, has been modified to $3,109,556. It previously appeared as $66. The, it did not affect the rest of the math that you see in Section 2.1.1. The other change is there also in 2.1.1 on Page 3, the Subpoint F, uh, identifying the city elements. There had been previous discussion on a, uh, one-half, one-half split of that element. Uh, it was ultimately the variable that enabled us to strike the 70-30, uh, percentage, uh, allocation, uh, so that, uh, number is correct, it just eliminated the reference to that being half. It's actually $33,882 of the total estimated cost of $40,301. The last change was simply that, um, in relation to the signatories on the Dean Evans Project, uh, in this case, it will only be necessary on behalf of Salina Baseball Enterprises for Mr. Hancock and Mr. Tomlin's to be signing, so the signature block was modified accordingly. And that's the only modifications. Uh, Mr. Hancock has a, a copy of that as well, so.
So, if I could, I'd like to, uh, turn the floor over to Kenny Hancock on behalf of Salina Baseball Enterprises, both to give you whatever remarks in general he'd like to give and then walk you through the, the scope.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hancock, representing Salina Baseball. I, I'm really not sure what I can add to what Mike and Greg have already said. They pretty much laid it out exactly, um, what we've been going through for the last several months, going through the development agreement. I can, uh, I can address the, um, naming rights a little bit. We do have a potential, um, party that is interested in the naming rights. I'm not at liberty to say who that is right now, we haven't closed that, uh, for sure yet, but we have spoken, at least Byron Tomlin says, you guys, I think, all know who Byron is, and he's spoken with the Wilbur family, and we will get it in writing that they're okay with changing the name from Wilbur Field down to what we, I guess, call Tower Field now.
If, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I could supplement that just a little bit. One, one thing I failed to point out is the Dean Evans Agreement and this agreement both include a provision that any naming initiative, acknowledgement on the part of Salina Baseball Enterprises, that any naming is ultimately subject to your review and approval as the governing body. So, they're working on it, knowing that ultimately it'll have to come back for final approval.
That's right. We'll follow the same, uh, guidelines that we did before. And, um, well, a, actually, Wilbur Field right now has got kind of a, what, a 30-year-old sign up there that, uh, it, it's, isn't the best. We, we would actually, we're hoping to add a plaque and call it Wilbur Field, a really, a really more of a monumental-type plaque for naming it if we, if we move it. And we would like to be able to do the same type of thing at Wilbur Field that we originally did at Dean Evans with our donors' names and, and just some basic information on how we got to, to where we are with Wilbur, Wilbur Field. I'm not sure, it, it might just be easy if you guys have questions to answer, because I'm not sure what I can add. Uh, Mike said it all, the numbers are correct, we've, we've taken several months to work through the agreements and, uh, have carved it out. We are, we, meaning Salina Baseball, we're going to act as the project manager like we did at Dean Evans and at South High. We're going to do it for the city as well as part of it, uh, those will be services we just donate to you guys as part of the whole project. Yeah, anything that comes up, and not just on the, the city elements, because they're, they're fairly well-identified. Each of the elements, whether we're doing them or paying for them or not, w- we'll work together to make sure that it's exactly what we think we should be getting. We're going to be writing the lighting specs, or we'll have an electrical engineer write the lighting specs for Dean Evans and Wilbur, and we'll run those by, uh, your Parks and Rec or anybody that we're designated to do that, to make sure that we, we think we're getting exactly what you want, the control system that, that works, that works best for you guys. So, we're going to work hand-in-hand, and, uh, we'll be the, we'll be the lead, we'll negotiate prices of our own. We don't have to bid if we're paying for it, but, uh, we have to go through the bid process, we recognize that on the elements that you get, and, and hopefully we can help you guys get better prices on, on the elements that you're paying for as well.
If you would, you might just make a quick run through the project elements, um, please.
All of these that we've got on here, maybe?
Not line by line, but kind of, concept by concept, yeah.
Okay. Uh, first ones just, by, by the way, this is a spreadsheet that I, 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 being an engineer, I really love spreadsheets, so, um, it's, it's just items that we typically put for all of these type of projects, and I really, I gleaned the information that I used at Dean Evans for this and just modified it for the Wilbur Field. General site and civil work is the first one, and it, it includes concrete removal that we might have to on the existing runway to make room for fencing and light poles and anything like that, maybe add some new concrete, uh, just, just general site, civil work, moving things around. Stadium utilities, probably not a lot of utilities will be needed because we're not planning on adding any bathrooms, but we will run a water line in for a bottle filler on a drinking fountain at that, at Wilbur Field, so the utilities will be very, fairly small item there. Playing field work is really where most of, of the project is. It's 2. almost $4 million of the 3.1, which is turf, the grading system, the lighting for both Wilbur and Dean Evans, scoreboard, all the fencing, bullpens, dugouts, things like that. Uh, Mike mentioned the, uh, netting for the backstop. Parts of the existing backstop poles, not the fence itself, it's in horrid shape, but the poles on part of it are in okay shape. Unfortunately, the poles going down the first base side, now, that's, that's only from the backstop down to about the dugout. I'm not talking about the fences itself for the, for the foul lines, but the backstop fencing, yeah, I, we, we had hopes that that would still be fine and we could just do something with it. I'm, I'm not sure we're going to be able to salvage that. When poles lean that are buried 10 feet in the ground, that are coated in concrete, y- y- you don't just stand them back up and tamp around it, so, so there'll be some major surgery. What we're going to look at is doing a dinema netting system like we did at Dean. If we do that, we, we don't have the grandiose, uh, grandstand that we have at Dean, so it'll be a much smaller version of that, but the line of sight is just vastly smar, superior when you have a tension netting system versus bars and, and chain link. So, that's what we're looking at, so we've got quite a bit of money, well over $100,000 in there to do that, if we, if we can get that done for that amount of money. We might, might just have to use a chain link, but we hope not. We hope to make it equal to, to what Dean is. Uh, bullpens, of course, and they're not going to be located on the field like they are at Dean, because Dean is just an enormous field that had room. Uh, Wilbur does not have that, but it will. Wilbur does not have that, but it will be turfed just exactly like it is at Dean, it'll just be outside of the playing field, but accessed to the playing field right next to it. General fencing, that's outfield, foul lines, any security fencing that we've got, and we, and that's a good point, maybe we should talk about, we plan on making the entry as it is currently, as you go into Dean, we're going to leave that as the entry point, and we'll put fencing in so that if we secure Dean now, we will have secured the new field as well. And we'll put, we'll put an, an entryway into Wilberfield as a part of that security fencing, but generally speaking, that'll probably be closed so that we can control entry for high school and even college games if they're going to use both fields. We chose Wilbur for, so that the high schools would have a much handier way of having varsity and junior varsity, which is always a problem if you've had kids that do that, and sometimes you have kids that are playing both varsity and junior varsity. And one of the premier things that we're doing here is some additional seating I'm going to get to in just a minute. Hitting cage, the current cage is, I guess you could call it usable if you use your imagination. Right now, we're going to remove that in its entirety, move it away closer down to where, say, the Dean Evans scoreboard is now, at least down in that area. We'll light it, of course, and it'll be a full, brand-new batting cage. At least that way, the noise of hitting won't be involved in the field of play going on at Wilbur, so we thought we'd isolate that for, for various reasons. The grandstand, our vision for that is it'll be a wraparound-type grandstand, a covered grandstand like is currently over at South High, the new one over at South High. And then on each wing of that centerpiece, we're going to put an elevated seating area, meaning it's about 15 feet by, we haven't decided yet, 25 or 30 feet, and it's going to be a pre-stress concrete slab on both sides, and so you'll be able to bring lawn chairs and sit underneath it and watch the Wilberfield, or you can go upstairs with railing, safety railing to meet code, and watch either Wilbur or Dean Evans. We thought that would be a nice touch for, for the people that are watching both a JV and a varsity game. PA system, we'll, we'll put a PA system and a little refrigerator for the press box, which is included as part of the, the covered grandstand right behind. I think that covers the construction items.
Yeah, thank you. One other item of note, the agreement in the packet has some blanks for dates to be filled in, and frankly, they're deadlines for Baseball Enterprises, so need to consult with them to fill those in, in a timeline that syncs up with their fundraising intentions. So we'll, with your permission, we'll fill the, we'll figure those out and fill them in as we execute the agreement.
You can't see that, I don't know if you guys have the one, the spreadsheet called the Wilbur renovations project cost tracking spreadsheet? And if you look right in the middle of the page, it says cost difference, red equals cost overrun, black, cost savings. Right now, it all looks like that's cost savings because we, you know, haven't paid for anything. But you'll be able to go, as these elements each get built, we'll be able to have in real-time knowledge, are we over on some, are we under on some, and we update it weekly, so we would know every time we write a bill what that's done to our project budget. What I think I'll do is, and I haven't done that yet because I was on vacation when I was doing this, and I'll add down here Salina Baseball totals and city totals so that we can see how each individual budget is doing, and I'll, and I'll link them to the individual cost items that we've, we've delegated to each entity.
Questions for staff or Mr. Hancock?
Where is the transient guest tax now sitting? If there's a potential gap, what's the gap?
Debbie's on her way.
I was going to say, do we want to ask Mr. Hancock any, can we go ahead and ask about the facility first? And then, let's, since we have him up there, if we could do that, because I, that was on mine too, so.
Worried about how we're going to pay for it later.
Well, we'll just, let's ask.
I don't have any facility questions. Mine are all financial.
Okay.
No questions. You said you're just going to share the bathrooms, locker room there with Dean Evans. I guess you, you got an idea how that's going to work, is when you're in one, entering to one facility, you're going to be in both?
Yes. There won't be any encumbrances to getting you from one, from Wilbur to Dean, it'll be a free flow, yes.
Okay.
For a perfect world, we'd add another bathroom at Wilbur. Of course, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's, it's awfully close. The newly remodeled Dean Evans toilets are awfully close to Wilberfield. To be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a toilet just for Wilberfield, ideally that's what we'd love to do, but it's financially probably not feasible to do it. But, and that's your question, it'll be open to being able to get to and from Dean.
Okay. And what's the timeline looking like on this?
Well, we originally wanted to start in August, but I believe that is now, right? So because we haven't got the agreement signed yet, that's not going to be possible. Might, we start in October, maybe. Last time we started in November and we played ball in March, so we're still a long ways from being too late to being playing ball next year on Wilberfield. Months, we have months of safety built in, and I've talked to our preferred, let's call it, turf contractor, and they're ready to, to work on it, they want to come back to Salina and work for us. This isn't as big a field as, as Dean Evans was. If we start in October, there's no reason why we wouldn't be able to get it done in time for baseball in, in the spring of '24.
Really?
Yeah. I know, it's shocking, but.
That is.
Yeah. I'll tell you what the longest lead item will be, the lights. And it's mostly because of the switchgear. The lights themselves, we can probably get up. It's UL-listed switchgear that somehow is a problem right now. We have a way around it. A, maybe we get lucky and the supply chain has loosened up, but six months ago it was a problem. We can always have them built by a licensed electrician, equally safe, equally robust, maybe more robust. They just won't come from Square D or somebody like that. They would be site-built using Square D or somebody else's parts. Equally robust, equally fine, we just haven't decided how to do it. But that right now will be the first package that we send out for bidding, because we might even play on Wilberfield without lights. I mean, it's, it's that dire as far as long lead. It might be nine months, we, we just don't know at this point.
Did they get the lighting situation sorted out there at the South Fields?
They did. It was a control wire element, and it, it wasn't as bad as anyone, or as any, as it could have been, let's say. It was a fairly simple fix from what I'm told, but you know, when you're in a downpour and you have a game being played, nothing seems simple when you can't find out where it's wrong. But they, they did figure it out pretty quickly, yeah.
Commissioner?
No questions.
And I looked at this, are there improvements being made to the dugouts at Wilbur?
Well, there's no Wilbur, there's no dugouts at Wilbur, so that's easy, yeah. Anything's an improvement.
Yeah, that's what I was, well, I was asking, I couldn't, I was looking here to see if I saw that on there.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sorry, Ben, a smart aleck.
I know.
You've known me.
I'm used to it.
A long time, right. The dugouts at Wilbur will be identical to the South High softball dugouts, much enlarged for the, for the size that baseball needs, because they have more.
So that's just part of the fencing and all that in there?
Well, the dugouts are a separate line item.
Okay. Oh, there it is down there. Okay, I thought, okay, I missed it the first time.
What's that? One C, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The lights at Wilbur and Dean, are those both antiquated? Is that why we're replacing those? I mean, is that something we would need to be doing even if we weren't upgrading the fields?
Great question. First of all, there's no lights at Wilbur.
True.
So.
But at Dean, I guess, yeah.
But Dean, they're metal halights, and that's a pretty common lamp. Metal halight has been a sport lighting lamp for decades. Before that, it was even worse. But they really degrade quickly as a, as a bulb, and you should replace the bulbs depending on use, depending on how often it gets used. At the most, three years, some stadiums do it every two years. We do it whenever a bulb burns out, which might be 10 years. Well, you, you might be down to less than your, 70% of original lumens is kind of the demarcation of replace. We could easily be down in the 50% area. And the problem is, it's costly, and it's, it's easy to defer that with, if you flip a switch, and some lights come on, because if you're a player over the years, you kind of get used to the bad lights as they get worse. When we put the lights back up, and they'll be LED with probably 5,000 degree Kelvin temperature rendition, which means it's white light like daylight, it'll, it'll be shocking how much the field looks compared to what it looks like now. And they're going to be identical. We're going to put the same amount of lumens of the field, both infield and outfield, as we do for each field.
And will we be using the same poles at Dean Evans?
Yeah. There's just, it's just cost prohibitive to replace those poles.
Okay.
But we will put in 80-foot poles, I believe those are 80-foot poles, I believe. They're not hundreds, I know that. And we, we'll, we'll put in 80s at, at Wilbur, and the light will just be incredible for both fields.
And last question, and this is because we're used to seeing this on the city side, you know, a contingency fund. You know, we always have that building contingency fund, which, you know, there's a little bit of.
I think Kenny's got plenty of margin in there in different places.
Well, I try to be, you know, what's the deal, and when I was an engineer, when you worked for Fortune 200 or Fortune 50 clients, you try to under-promise and over-deliver, and so our estimates tried to always make sure that we could anticipate that. We have a fair amount of contingency in these numbers. We feel pretty good about them. I mean, you never know, you just, it's, it's a pig in a poke, until you get numbers in, you just never know, but I feel good about them.
Okay.
I feel very good about them.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Commissioner Ryan, your question.
I think Ms. Pack knows what I was asking.
I think I do. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Your question was, how is TG, how's the transient tax, transient guest tax performing compared to what we need to pay the debt? We did just issue those bonds recently. The current debt payment on, the current debt for the baseball improvements is about $300,000 a year for 10 years. The current transient guest tax is about $320,000 a year that's set aside for this purpose. That leaves us about a $20,000 cushion, $20,000, $25,000 cushion, which does not cover the $140,000 we would need if we debt finance that. Thus, the 35% increase in transient guest tax that would be required to cover debt for this full project.
So you're, you're saying our, currently we're collecting $320,000 a year?
Roughly. That's set aside for this particular project, yes. As you call it, it's .75 of the 7.75.
Right, that's the additional that we added?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And what is that balance in that account currently? Because it was like 400 and some thousand?
It was 316 at the end of 2022, so that was prior to our, our debt financing. It's, it's a little over 400,000, I think.
In that account, okay. Okay.
So at what point do we sort out how to pay for this moving forward?
If you can give us direction today, then we'll follow up as needed to make that so. I mean, the presumption, unless there's debt financing involved, the presumption is we're going to take it out of available funds in reserve. But I think, as Debbie described, there's a little bit of transient guest tax margin there. I think the other thing that you could do, if we treated it as transient guest tax is the primary source, if there is any growth in transient guest tax, that could then be used to, to be captured, to be applied to this project, whether that's paying debt or paying back the fund from which you initially funded this from.
I have sort of a three-part question. I can't remember, did we allocate any of the transient guest tax funds for turf replacement fund?
We've, we've tried to finance the turf to correspond with the useful life of the turf, so.
And that money would be available, it would take a couple of years to generate, unless you financed the turf, I guess, but if you wanted to write a check for the turf, it would take three or four good years to buy each field.
Right. The analogy I've used before is we're financing the turf, much like you might finance a car, when you pay off your car, you go finance another car.
Right.
Or at least, some people do it that way. So we're at least trying to have the financing of the various turf improvements not exceed the useful life of those, of that turf, so.
Right, so were we, I thought part of the fees were going towards turf replacement fund originally?
Yes, and we're, we're trying to set fees accordingly. We're also mindful of how our fees compare to other facilities, so we've kind of got a cap in, in that regard. And then this does grant Baseball Enterprises a fee waiver.
Right, is there an estimate of the cost of that waiver? But I'm, I'm concerned about the turf replacement, which is the, the big looming.
Right.
Bill that some commission's going to have to sign a check for.
I believe that is matched to that is $25,000 a year.
So it wasn't a whole, whole?
No.
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 Didn't I hear at one point, the replacement of the turf is about 40% of the original?
Yeah.
Maybe 45. But, but yeah, those in that range, 45% usually-ish.
So are we using the user fees for anything else now? Or do we, are they earmarked for anything else?
Well, by way of the Dean Evans agreement, we've segregated those fees for maintenance. Other user fees, whether that be at Bill Burke, just go back into the general fund.
Right, so do we, are there enough other non-SBE users to generate enough user fees to pay for whatever we're using the user fees to pay for? Yeah, because we're creating a hole somewhere by waiving the fees.
Yeah, the, other than segregating the fees by way of the Dean Evans agreement, I don't know that fees ever caused us to break even on our operational costs as it relates to sports, whether you pick whatever sport you want. And so we haven't really isolated it in that way. We're recognizing the concern about, you know, the replacement cost of the turf coming home to roost eventually. That's why we did all the modeling that we did. And you may recall, we factored in the 40% that Commissioner Longmine was describing, because not only did we take on Dean Evans, we got all the turf at Bill Burke, but we tried to model that out and say, accounting for the lifecycle, accounting for the debt, and, and projecting when it would be time to replace that. We thought it was, the, the current payments would fund the replacement of the turf alone.
That might be a place to direct some of those excess transient guest funds. If, if you can figure out with all the Dean Evans and Mattson, and, not Mattson, Wilbur and Dean Evans, you know, what that cost is going to be 10 years from now, just to make sure we, our own point to pay it, yeah.
Well, being completely honest, I think, or direct, I think if we took, if we said any excess of transient guest tax we want to apply to this project, we, whether we debt finance it or whether we internally finance it, we'd essentially be paying that back. But I, without 30 to 35% transient guest tax growth, I don't think transient guest tax will fully fund it.
Okay.
Now, when you get out to the end of the debt financing of Dean Evans and Bill Burke and, and this, hopefully we have enough growth and we have enough, the timing works that, that we can fund the next round of replacement.
All right. Right, that was it. Any questions or comments?
I would think it would make sense to maybe take a little out of this general reserve fund, a little out of this other debts fund, and, and then take what transient guest tax money is available to make this work.
And not debt, and what you're saying is not debt finance it?
Right.
I'd like to not debt finance it.
That's the way I'm looking at it. Well, finance it internally and use the transient guest tax and supplement it with general fund?
Right, I'd use the general fund and pay it back as, as we can. I mean, it's, it's not that much money. You know, the transient guest fund, while it was, we increased it primarily for baseball, we changed the title, so it's really a sports facility fund. Tennis facility may need money, we have other sports ventures that may need some of that. Tennis facility may need money from, we have other sports ventures that may need some of that funding. But if we have the money that we didn't plan to have and we've been, you know, fortunate enough to have, I think this is relatively small enough that we find a way to pay cash for it. I don't want to take anything out of the Parkmaster that would affect the Parkmaster plan because that, that could really use another million dollars going into it, let alone taking anything from it.
Well, I think, I'm convinced, baseball pays off in the long run. And having another premier field will be a real asset to baseball at Salina. And it's hard to turn down 70% match of a project.
It pays, but by the time those monies trickle down to our treasury, it takes along, you know, the big box stores, the restaurants, the, it pays well for them. I don't know how, what percentage of that money actually ends up in our general fund. But, I mean, any is better than none, but it probably wouldn't help us budget-wise anytime soon.
If I can recap what I think I heard, treat it as internal financing. Look at the available funds in the transient guest tax balance. We're going to have to look at the modeling that we've previously done on, on the debt financing of Bill Burke. Use general fund reserve to fund it in the short run and then set it up for any excess transient guest tax to pay that back.
Would that still give us the flexibility to also use some of those funds if we needed them to complete the tennis project?
The transient guest tax funds?
Yeah.
No. That, that, the, what we have currently certainly falls short. And the only time we would have additional funds is if we saw 35% plus growth in transient guest tax revenue. Somewhere out in the future, maybe, but not in the short run.
Well, in my mind, we still had some budget left for tennis. And if you wanted to jumpstart that, we could have a conversation about using some general fund money there. We sort of approached that at one point, but then backed away from it. But that's another topic.
Well, they all kind of interrelate, but yeah.
I guess I should ask, any other big future projects in the next two years that we need to start thinking about paying now? Or is this kind of it for a while? Yes, or...
I don't know. No, let me throw one out.
Here, can you, did you have something to say?
Not really.
So I'm kind of, I'm really kind of teasing since Trent brought this up. But, you know, while we're out there and you've got us out there running things, and if we should get lucky and have a little extra money and we start looking at Mattson Field, now's the time to think about Mattson Field too, if you really wanted to do something with that. I can get you the best square foot price you'll ever hope for if we do it then. But I think that when we're done with this project, including the Mattson, we've promised we're gonna, I should say, whatever much money we raise, we're spending all of it on Salina baseball facilities. We are going to close that checking account and Byron and I are going to wave goodbye and go into the sunset when we're done with this. We can, we can probably call us back if we really need to. So right now, we care about Wilbur, but I think Mattson's something we ought to think about. Now is the time if, if it's remotely feasible. And I'll tell you what I could do. I can ask the turf company, no obligation, I can ask them, what would it cost to turf the infield only?
Infield only.
I would say infield only. Don't even think about the outfield because that's three times the cost. I'll see what it would take. I'm guessing you guys will say no, but I can always, you can say no to a number instead of an idea.
Well, I'd, you know, I'd rather, you know, do the whole thing now rather than every two years try to...
Couldn't agree more.
Find one little extra, you know, thing we stuck in a drawer somewhere and...
So if, if you'll, if you want to go down that path, I would like the opportunity to take a bigger look at the breadth of all of our identified needs and requests.
Now, this isn't going to slow down Wilbur, is it, taking that bigger look?
No.
No.
We can't.
Has the water and drainage issues at Mattson been addressed?
No.
Part of the project that we've previously committed to is trying to address the drainage coming off the runway at Berkeley Family Recreation. So shortly, you'll have bids coming forward for Bill Burke improvements and we'll at least have a cost estimate for the drainage improvements. But I think that's in the half million dollar range.
But to add to that, that's, that will take care of run-on water. That does not take care of water that falls directly on the field that turns into a pond.
Yeah, grading for the field itself to runoff is necessary.
Yeah, that doesn't solve that. And it turns, it's unplayable after a half an inch of rain at the most. And of course, turfing takes care of all of that because you have a drainage system that it just whips it away, so... Kill two birds with one stone on that, but you would. In order to fix the drainage, you either need to turf it or go out to about 30 feet past the infield rim and completely regrade that in its entirety. Kind of start over with the infield. That's the problem. It's got swales too many places and just ponds.
Okay. Okay, is there any comments or questions from the public? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or motion.
Mayor, I move we authorize the mayor to execute the attached agreement with Salina Baseball Enterprises relating to Wilbur Field and James Mattson Field.
I'll second that.
If I could clarify things that we've already summarized, that I assume presumes the edits to the agreement that the city legal council identified acknowledges the need to fill in the blanks in coordination with Salina Baseball Enterprises. And then we will be reporting back to you on the financing as you described.
Yeah, but this, this gives Salina Baseball Enterprises the ability to go out and start getting bids and everything, correct?
Correct.
And raising money, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to execute the attached agreement with Salina Baseball Enterprises relating to Wilbur Field and James Mattson Field. And that is per the three corrections made to the agreement as presented by legal counsel. All those in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? That item passes 5-0. Thank you, and... I'm not sure where you're sitting there. You need to go raise money. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Okay, that will bring us to development agreement or business, sorry.
Item 7.1, Lakeview Estates Edition Number Three. 7.1A, consider acceptance of offered street right-of-way easement dedications from Standby Quest to serve Lakeview Estates Edition Number Three. A proposed 15-lot subdivision of a 16.37 acre tract of land located on the east side of South Ohio Street south of Magnolia Road. Item 7.1B, second reading of ordinance number 23-11156, requesting annexation of the 16-acre tract of land located on the east side of South Ohio Street between Magnolia Road and the Stone Lake Edition. And item 7.1C, second reading of ordinance number 2311157, requesting a change in zoning district classification from Celine County Agricultural to Plan Development District R2 Multifamily Residential to allow the construction of single-family homes and townhomes on a 16.37 acre tract of land located on the south side of the Knox Sand Pit east of South Ohio Street.
Okay, Mr. Andrew. I guess we'll start with 7.1A.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. On 7.1A, we're looking at acceptance of easement and right-of-way dedications this evening. And Mr. Byquist is now wanting to develop a peninsula of land that's located on the east side of South Ohio Street, east of Lakeview Estates Number Two, which is where the Cedarhurst Assisted Living Facility is being built. And this peninsula is between the south shore of the Knox Sand Pit and the Stone Lake Edition. And he is proposing to extend a public street from Eden Bay Drive into final plat, 15 lots along that street for either two-unit townhome or single-family home construction. This particular peninsula of land is currently outside the city limits and he has submitted companion applications to annex and rezone that property, which are also on today's agenda for consideration on second reading. So back on June 26th of this year, you approved ordinances on first reading, annexing the property into the city and rezoning the property with final approval being held subject to satisfactory plating of the property. In terms of the dedications, we pointed out to you that the right-of-way for Ohio was already dedicated back in 2003 and then an additional dedication in 2007 to allow for the 10-foot hike bike trail that's on the east side of Ohio. There's a 150-foot drainage right-of-way along the north boundary of the property that is for a drainage ditch that extends from Ohio into the sand pit. And there's an existing sanitary sewer easement for the city's interceptor sewer. In terms of new dedications, Mr. Byquist is proposing to dedicate public right-of-way for Byquist Way. He's also showing some drainage easements on the plat that would convey storm runoff from the street back to the sand pit. He's set aside an area that he's calling conservation easement. And the purpose of that conservation easement is to allow him as a developer to perform maintenance in that area. And he's provided an access easement to allow him to get back there. There is an existing drainage easement for the Knox Sand Pit that was acquired by the city in 1999. That's shown on the plat and occupies the rear of the individual lots that are on the north side of the street. The people who buy those lots, the individual owners, would be responsible for maintaining that area that's subject to the easement. And we're setting up a maintenance covenant so that if, if they fail to do so, the city could go in and perform that required maintenance and assess the cost back to the owners. So this final plat went before the planning commission in July, July the 18th. And they voted to approve the final plat, subject to a number of conditions that are outlined in page six and seven of your report. And if you concur with their action, a motion should be made to authorize or to accept the right-of-way for Byquist Way and the utility and drainage easements shown on the plat on behalf of the city and to authorize the mayor to sign the plat. Mr. Byquist and his design engineer are here if you have any questions about the plat or his plans for those areas. But it's, it's the lots on the north side of the street that are benefit from but also have certain maintenance responsibilities that would be associated with the area next to the sand pit. And talking with Mr. Byquist, it's important to get those maintenance responsibilities outlined and recorded with the plat so when people buy lots, they know what they're responsible for. So with that, I'll be open to any questions or Mr. Byquist is available as well.
Okay, I'll start on my right. Any questions? Okay, I know we've discussed it before. Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move we accept the offered street. The mic's not on. Mayor, I move the acceptance of the offered street right-of-way and easement with dedications from Standby Quest to serve Lakeview Estates Edition Number Three. A proposed 15-lot subdivision of a 16.37 acre tract of land on the east side of Ohio Street, south of Magnolia Road. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the offered street right-of-way and utility and drainage easements dedications and to authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city of Salina for Lakeview Estates Edition Number Three. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0. Okay, Mr. Andrew, that brings us to item 7.1B. I guess not. I guess, Nicky, I'm sorry. I guess this is second reading.
Those were held for second reading until you had a final plat that was approvable. That's been done, so that condition is satisfied and allows you to move ahead with your second readings.
So item 7.1B is the second reading of ordinance number 2311156, requesting annexation of a 16-acre tract of land located on the east side of South Ohio Street between Magnolia Road and the Stone Lake Edition.
Okay, on June 26th, ordinance number 23-11156 was passed on first reading, subject to the plating of the property which we just approved. Since that time, the property owner has submitted it. We've approved it and there's been no comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public at this time? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 2311156 on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11156 on second reading. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbye?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That item passes 5-0. That will bring us to item 7.1C.
Item 7.1C, second reading of ordinance number 2311157, requesting a change in zoning district classification from Celine County Agricultural to PDDR2 Multifamily Residential to allow the construction of single-family homes and townhomes on a 16.37 acre tract of land located on the south side of the Knox Sand Pit east of South Ohio Street.
Okay, ordinance number 23-11157 was passed on first reading on June 26th, subject again to the plating of the property, which has now been approved. And since that time, there have been no comments from the public. Are there any comments at this time from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
We approve ordinance number 23-11157 on second reading. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11157 on second reading. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbye?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye, that item passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, that will lead us to other businesses. An item that a commissioner would like to bring before the body?
One, probably guess from my earlier question. Is any update on, I'll call it the tennis field house or whatever, that building there? As far as its rehab or any, any new information?
Other than working with Salina Tennis Alliance on remaining minor punch list items, as well as their annual plan for next year, we don't really have any directive or initiative from the governing body with regard to that building other than we have committed to bathroom renovations on the interior. So staff is proceeding with the original scope of work. But an expanded scope of work has not been a topic, nor has it been a directive from the governing body.
Would that be initiated by Salina Tennis or by us as far as the basic cosmetic work on the outside of the building? Which has all been identified and listed?
Right, so I'm sorry. If, there is, there is a scope of work of about $175,000, which is making the roof waterproof, some exterior improvements, just aesthetic improvements, and the bathroom work. That, that's underway and will be done in the off-season. If the expectation is further improvement of that building beyond that, that's not something that's been budgeted or initiated. I don't, I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Well, I mean, there were, there were plans, you know, to do varying levels of just basic rehab of the inside to, to make it a usable surface on the inside of the building. Unfunded plans, but I did not know if there'd been any additional work done by Salina Tennis in that direction or any other proposals from them to see if there's something they need help with.
Based on their prior proposal and, and our response to them, their funding opportunity that they had and their proposal, they've redirected and which left us with the original responsibility of the bathrooms. And we have since discussed with you as the governing body, expanding that to address the leaking roof and some exterior... body, expanding that to address the leaking roof and some exterior aesthetic improvements, but we remain of a limited scope of getting those bathrooms back and serviceable, making the roof waterproof or watertight, and dealing with, you know, soffit and fascia, those type of things. But the broader conversation about additional facility improvements that Salina Tennis Alliance proposed was not approved, and so we've done no more in that regard.
So then our work, current work is done. We'll have a building presentable from the outside but not usable on the inside?
The inside bathrooms will be usable.
Other than the bathrooms.
The other space will not be improved. If that's something you'd like to revisit, we certainly can do that. We might have missed an opportunity with Salina Tennis Alliance, but we can take that back up.
Well, just to see if there was a proposal, I don't know how much of it could have been reworked. Just hate to see the building sit there and not be usable at all, other than for bathrooms.
So...
Are you saying there are additional bathrooms in that structure, or the bathrooms in that little, what I call the commissary area?
The, and maybe we need to have a staff presentation and revisit this topic, but what were previously the showers, as you, if you're familiar with the building from days of old, there's a male and female set of showers that you cycled through to get to the pool. So the original plan was to make those serviceable, I think is the word that we used in the original agreement with Salina Tennis Alliance. So from staff's perspective, we had a very minimal budget and scope to do that. We started into that work. Salina Tennis Alliance then approached you and said, we have some funding, we have a sponsor, but they made an ask of you that was sizable in terms of our contribution to that. We didn't take them up on that, which then caused them to have to rethink what they wanted to do with their, what their sponsor wanted to do, and so they've moved away from trying to renovate the building and just said, city, go ahead and meet your original obligation by way of the original agreement, which was getting the bathrooms serviceable. So staff is back to that model. In the intervening time, there was conversation about the roof leaking, so we had expanded our scope and our budget to address that, and then there was some intention on staff's part all along to address the soffit and fascia boards and things that were showing age, but that's been the extent of what I understood your direction to staff to be, and that is the extent of what we're pursuing.
Does Salina Tennis have free rein to if they want to go in and make modifications and improvements on their own?
Free rein, no. We'd end up having to do some type of an agreement like we just did with Salina Baseball Enterprises, but I think, I don't want to speak for Salina Tennis Alliance, but I think they proposed to us a cost-share arrangement that we frankly turned down, and so I think they've moved on. That's not to say they might not take it back, you know, we could certainly have more conversation.
Well, I think we need to get our part finished that we are originally committed to and hope for the best. And those bathrooms are accessed from outside of the building. You don't go inside to...
Right, they each have their own entrance on what would be the east side of the building, and so if you're familiar with the work that staff has done in the Bill Burke Restrooms, the epoxy flooring that we're putting in, and I always clarify that, not just epoxy paint like you might put on your garage floor, true aggregate epoxy flooring and plumbing upgrades, that's the intended scope with city staff for both of those bathrooms, and that's on their schedule. They're planning to do that in the off-season.
We have a round of appointments coming, the mayor has a round of appointments coming up for boards and commissions, and as I look through those, the different offerings there, is there some way we could standardize some of the definitions in there about what a community member is or what someone outside the city limits is? There were people that applied that don't live in Salina, don't work in Salina. There's boundary area membership to some of the commissions. I think that means our planning map and the two or three miles outside the city limits that incorporates, I think it could use some definitions and some clarity in, you know, how you get categorized to make an application there. Some of that seems confusing to me, and it's not standard from one board to the next as you read the introduction and who's, who can qualify for this board. It just doesn't seem clear to me.
Yeah, we certainly can take a look at, I think a lot of them probably can be standardized. Some of them actually, you know, by statute or by code adoption impose some unique requirements that we'd have to take a look at by way of amendment. Could we standardize those as well? But residency requirement came up recently, and we really didn't have a lot of clarity on, there was a presumption of residency requirement, but we didn't have that codified in certain instances.
You know, is that living in Salina, or is that working in Salina?
Right.
All of that.
And that's a really good policy decision that we might have to bring back to you as we standardize that, but that's a good point.
Just a thought.
Okay, that will bring us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who would like to to come forward. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please identify who you're from or who you are and where you're from.
Norman, Manal, Salina. Why would anyone serve on the board when they have no vote in this issue? This is a dictatorship up here, a small group of you, it's a gang. But I've got a report here on this water issue. I've been out west, and I just got back today. So you're going to run out of water here. Show the map. You're going to lose land values. I'm going to show this to Mitch. People are going to move here, not going to have any water. Three rivers start in western Kansas, that's where you get your groundwater here. The Smoky, the Celine, and the Solomon, and they all converge right here on the east side of town. So you ain't going to have any water in 20 years if it takes that long. It's so dry out west. And number two, if we're going to have baseball, why don't we bring in football? They make more money playing football than they do baseball. If anybody can make 45 million a year, he better bring football in.
Ben Winholz, Salina. It's kind of funny that Commissioner Davis brought up the tennis complex. To Mr. Longby's answer or comment that we need to finish it, yes, we do, because we've already paid for the main water line coming to the building, which of course is helping with the standalone bathrooms that are to the north side, but we've already started this project quite a while, so we need to finish it. On that note, evidently STA doesn't figure it's in their best interest to take care of the inside. I just drove by there today, and the grass is this tall. I should say the weeds are this tall. So their agreement was they'd take care of anything inside the fence, and it looks like it hasn't been mowed for the last three weeks. Outside looks good, city takes care of it, it's mowed nice, so are they even opening and closing the facility, or are we still, as the city, doing that? Can you tell me? Can...
Yeah, we've agreed to a modified approach, which I've reported previously, that we open, as part of our contractors, they open bathrooms, they open those facilities, and so they're available beyond the times that the gates are propped open, and when that's the case, then the PIN code works. But in the interest of public access, we've taken a different approach, and we're opening the gates in the morning and closing them at night.
So what is STA doing?
They're scheduling, they're operating, they're taking out the trash, they're doing the day-to-day operations, and I want to, I'm going to have to call on Jeff Hammond. I'm not sure whether they're exclusively responsible for everything inside the fence. We may have responsibility for some of the money inside the fence.
Not according to your agreement. Your agreement says they take care of everything inside the fence, that included the grass.
There is a map, and it is color-coded, and I don't know if we're talking about the rodeo ground fence or the tennis.
No, around the tennis court.
There is portions on the east side that are within the tennis footprint that are the city's responsibility, but within the four pods of the courts, those are STA's responsibility. So there is a, yeah, there is a map, and yeah, not sure at all if I can add to that other than providing the map.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
Maybe the city then needs to borrow, lend them a mower, basically, or somebody, or they need to get somebody to do it, because it's starting to look shabby, and, you know, that's what this was all about, this tennis complex, was because the other ones were run down, we needed a quality tennis facility that could be taken care of and that we could be proud of, and there isn't anybody over there playing. I go by multiple times, there isn't hardly anybody over there except for maybe STA or their own people, or I said as far as public, I don't see anybody playing, so it's getting to the point where somebody needs to step up maybe and start taking care and making the facility look a little bit better and presentable for anybody that does want to play.
Thank you. We'll look into that. Okay, it looks like we have an executive session scheduled. How much time do we need?
Let's try 20 minutes, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss a subject of legal considerations relating to the pending case of Tim LaPage versus City of Salina and Larry Mulliken with legal counsel Terrell Mock of the law firm of Fisher, Patterson, Saylor, and Smith, based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319, Section B, Subsection 2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:22 PM.
So two things, just want to acknowledge those in attendance in addition to Terrell Mock, insurance-appointed counsel, city legal counsel Greg Bengson, myself, deputy city manager Jacob Wood, assistant city manager Sean Hennessy, and then I'm not sure about Nancy Schussler, risk manager, but she may be joining us. And then don't anticipate any action being taken.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, to move into executive session for 20 minutes, resuming the commission meeting in this room at 6:23. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will be back in 20 minutes. We will be back in 20 minutes. We're back, we're back in session and we have no further business. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will see everyone next week.